Okay, we'll call the meeting to order and we'll begin by welcoming all the principals today who are presenting their single-site plans. And I guess we are beginning with Galita Valley Junior High. Oh, I do want to, I'm sorry, make comments that we have translation available. Mr. Gonzalez is here, so if there's anybody who needs translation.
Actually, we have Nina Thorleksen today.
Oh, we do, I'm sorry, I apologize. And then also, we have headsets for the hearing impaired. So now, we can move on to our first presentation, which is Galita Valley Junior High. Thank you. I'm scattered today, I apologize. Do we have any public comment?
No.
No, okay. Then now, I believe, we can move on.
Well, this is a continuation of our single-plan presentations. The single plans are the plans for student achievement that address the needs of low-performing students or students in special categories, whether they're Title I and low-achieving students, whether they're Title III and English learners, for example. And the plans specifically targets goals and activities and assigns budgets to those activities from categorical funds. To introduce this today, I would like Jan Zettel, our Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Education, to describe what we're about to hear from our junior high principals and to introduce the principals.
Great, thank you, Dr. Sarvas. We're really pleased to be here today. We, over the last several years, have been working very, very hard to align our single school plans for student achievement with our LEAP plan, which is the district-wide plan, making sure that all of the plans connect in some way to that, to the greater plan at the district level. This year, with the help of Dr. Cynthia White, we have introduced School Plan, which is a web-based, and actually accessible by board members, planning tool. This tool can be used throughout the year to chart and track the progress of the plans as they move to fruition, including expenditures and including activities that have been completed. And so I wanted to let the board know that you are certainly welcome and we can give you a little quick how-to-do-it update on School Plan. Now, School Plan comes to us as a, directly from the State Department of Ed, with the state's kind of new conception of School Plan, a new template or a new format. We're using goals that have direct actions applied to them, direct timelines, and people assigned. And so, when you get to that level of specificity with the plans, you will be able to see them as they are finished. And so today, I'm very pleased to have our junior high principals here. We've also been working very hard on being collaborative, knowing that in a standards-based system that we are in, that we all need to work together and we all need to collaborate because our children are learning the same kinds of things as prescribed by the state. And the emphasis that we'll have is on children that are in that achievement gap area, and how do we bring them to higher levels of achievement? And with that, I'd like to introduce Veronica Rogers from Galita Valley, and she'll kick us off.
Thank you, it's nice to be here in the morning. At Galita Valley Junior High, our enrollment has gone down from, it was 913 last year and we're at 851 right now. And with that, the majority of that enrollment, it was with the seventh grade, has declined. The overall focus area for our school has been specifically in mathematics. That's been our very strong area. We were targeted two years ago as not having met the proficiency levels for our Latino population. And at that time, we're now in our third year of intervention. We also have looked specifically in our groups with English language learners, our Latino population, the low socioeconomic group, and our special education learners. The proficiency level for this year, as well as for next year, will be, the goal is at 26.5 percent, and our Latino population was at 24.9 percent. So, we were very close, but not quite there. When we initially received our reports back, I was ecstatic when I noticed that the socio-economically disadvantage was really high, but then later on, I found out that we had not quite, that wasn't quite put incorrectly. And so, I was thinking that that was our targeted group. All the interventions I'll talk about were really focused at our socio-economic, low socioeconomic group. Because that entails, and initially it showed, oh, we were up at 39 percent, wow, how did it get there? It must have been our after-school tutorials, it must have been our coaching, the extra math classes, the extra English classes. But at this point, it doesn't show that that was quite there. The other school-wide focus area that we're looking at is that all students will achieve English Language Arts proficiency, minimum 24.4 percent, and at least one year's growth is determined by the CST, English Language Arts results. And again, we were looking at the English language learners, our Latino, low socioeconomic group, and our special education learners. In looking at the results, and you have them in the packet on page, I believe it's on page four specifically, but you can see some of the trends. We were pleased that our, specifically, our Latino population was moving up at a faster rate, actually, than our, I mean, our English language learner population was moving at a faster rate than our Latino population. So, those interventions that the English learners have, have included High Point, an additional English Language Arts class, tutorial support. And watching that trend go up, we wanted to be able to focus also on our middle-level classes, which are, we call them the college prep for both English and for mathematics. Some of the school-profile highlights that I'd like to just focus on really is the work in departments. And this year, you'll hear the words professional learning community, professional learning departments. We work a lot in that arena. We are in, as I said, our third year of our professional development plan and with the interventions that we've been working on, and they're working. Are they working enough? Do we need to target even further? Yes, we do need to target even more. And I think tools like Edgusoft that we're going to be getting, which really can target, we can see if our midterms and finals, which subgroups are really making the progress that we want to see happen, it's going to be exciting. So, the learning curve is high this year. But I think the way we look at data and how we disaggregate it from years ago to how we look at it now, it used to be the departments would focus overall on, we just want to raise, kind of like the API, we just want to raise our scores. Well, where are we going to raise them? How are we going to raise them? Look at your subgroups. Also, revisiting the data, not just at the beginning of the school year, but on a quarterly basis with progress reports. One of the interventions that we look at is our after-school tutorial, and I think we're getting better every year. And our first year, it was, it wasn't implemented early enough. We waited until the quarter report cards. Now, it's implemented day one. We're looking at the data in the summer and targeting which students are at basic, level three, and how can we help support them? We're also, one of the changes we've made over our three-year trend here is we're including the C-minus student and the basic student, not just looking at the far below basic, or but how are we going to get those kids up to proficient? And then also, looking at the type of interventions. We are, right now, I'm pleased to say, have about 100 students that are attending a seventh-period tutorial. And one of the interventions that we started last year was the mandatory. And in our first year, in order for a student not to be in the mandatory tutorial, and if a parent didn't want their child in there, they had to meet with an administrator. Now, we don't hear much about it anymore. It's just, it's become part of the school culture. And I always tell the parents, I pay $40 an hour for a tutor, we're offering this at our school. In the tutorial classes, the way they're run, there's three components. One is an opportunity to have help with homework, but the other part is to have direct instruction, and the third part is to be able to preview what's going to be found in the math classes. And with that, we're running right now, three seventh-grade classes and one eighth-grade class. And the reason that the eighth-grade class is a little bit smaller in the after-school tutorial is because we're putting within the school day, the math lab, which is again a tutorial class, so those students have a second math class. One of the reasons we're doing that is because at our school, I have five buses that bring students in. The buses really take about 250 kids, and they rely on that. And I can't get the MTD. If we could do that, that would be fantastic. To get MTD to run a 330 bus would help us out. And I was able to do it three years ago, but in the last two years, with funding, has been an issue. The other part in working in the department teams, at the beginning of the year, they hand in yearly focus goals. Those goals are based on the CST results, the subgroups, as well as on how well students did on midterms and finals, and then also on grades. So those three are the beginning of the year. Right now, we just had our first-quarter results, and the departments, actually, it was just Wednesday, the 15th, they worked through the, I gave each core department the C-minus, D, and F list, and then also had a professional development, where one of my teachers who went to the AVID conference last year gave an in-service on how to utilize different strategies for those students who did not get the curriculum. Looking at some of the AVID strategies, and English learner strategies, they're just good teaching. So, looking at graphic organizers, looking at Cornell note-taking, and all of my tutors that I've hired are being trained in utilizing those AVID strategies as well. And every single meeting that we've had this year, those teachers, and I took with me five that went to the AVID conference, have done an in-service. So, they first started with, in August, with the Cornell note-taking and the WICER. That's the writing, reading, inquiry, and collaboration. Every classroom will have that poster, handmade by a student. And our AVID classes are growing. We have eighth grade, at this point, we have one eighth-grade AVID class, but we've extended, this really says something about the kids, to a seventh grade, who will meet during lunch once a week and also after school. So, I provide pizza. So there's the motivator. It's growing. I could see more classes heading that direction, and more kids coming about and saying, okay, what are my goals? In every student's agenda, the culture of the school is, you all have an agenda and you all have a binder. So it just takes the cool out of the whole mix. And the first page of the agenda is an academic portfolio. And in the academic portfolio, the first part is looking at quarter grades, so first homework assignment right now is get the quarter grades in. The second part is looking at the CST in English Language Arts, Math, and Writing. The third part are the interventions that are available at the school, including lunchtime homework center with four credential teachers each, Monday through Thursday, after-school tutorial, I offer after-school homework center, library open before school, during lunch, after school, computer lab available. Students, every one of my, every single teacher this year, I can come to the table here and say, 100 percent of my teachers have a website, please feel free to check our website, we're pretty proud of it. And, but each teacher has a webpage and where students can access their, and parents can access their grades, as well as resources, and their syllabus should be on there. And some teachers have gone really wild with the resources, and others have the basics that I require, which is the student grades and their syllabus. So that's another way departments can work. The other part is exams in all of the core academics, they drive the instruction. And it's not just the responsibility of the English department or the math department. The departments collaborate, they meet together in cross-teams, meaning English and social studies will meet, they will go through and determine where they are in the course of history, and that might drive the English. As far as math and science, they might look at, science department might say, well, we're really working on an area of graphing, fractions, statistics, and the math department will be able to make sure that that is happening. PE as well. PE really ties in everything that's going on in the school, as well as industrial technology classes. It's built on vocabulary. And you'll see in a lot of classrooms now, even those elementary pocket charts, that they have those blue pocket charts, because our big push this year is on vocabulary. And from vocabulary comprehension and from vocabulary sentence structure. And all students, English language learners, any student in school, complete sentences are expected. Let's see. We also offer an English transition class, and so those students going from seventh into eighth will have an opportunity to have a double-period course. It's not taught by High Point, it's taught with the whole, and lot of rich literature. And again, vocabulary, vocabulary. We also have an English transition class. If students are able to exit in the middle or after a quarter, like right now, we're examining, if we can push kids forward, we try to. And they're able to do that as well. We also have a reclassification ELD committee group that we don't exit students initially, but we are able to follow their progress and see where they need to have additional resources. Our goal is that the kids start high school ready to go. So, we try to keep them as much. The other area is writing across curriculum, empower writing. We are in our third year, we have a real strong grasp, I think, at our school. We've observed several other schools, and I'm really proud of the work we're doing there. It's adopted as a uniform method of writing across English, social studies, science, even PE classes. And in every single classroom, you'll see our Galita Valley Junior High, I showed you through, right, I saw the writing rubric and pointed it out. And what's really been exciting at the school, looking at year three, is that the departments are collaborating on writing assignments. So if social studies is requiring an assignment, they might have an English teacher helping grade. Or the social studies department will come and meet with the English teachers. They recently had a grading day on persuasive essays, and they had to agree what a 5-4-3-2, or 4-3-2-1, I guess, paper looks like and why, and defend it. And then, give those results back. So the kids already in this first quarter have had a writing paper given back, persuasive essay, on a common topic, and been given feedback as to what were their strengths, what were their weak areas, and how could they then improve on that? I think that was very powerful, to get everyone, all English teachers in the room at the same time, and social studies, pretty powerful. I already talked about alignment of elective courses with instructional calendars in English and math. And then, we also have a family-school compact, that's the third page of the agenda, right next to the academic portfolio. So every student has that family-school compact, whether they're struggling or not. If they are struggling, we make sure we have a team meeting with teachers and parents and students and fill it out again. Look at some of the other interventions that are available, whether it's a study buddy or weekly progress reports, or a tutorial class, or additional English class, or more time with tutors. Three types of tutors on campus. Math coaches, and these are not credential teachers necessarily, but math majors. CalSOUP tutors, who have been AVID-trained, and then also, we have AmeriCorps tutors, literacy tutors, that focus specifically on literacy, vocabulary building, or even since we do not have any corrective reading classes, other than within the special education department this year, we're still focusing on oral language fluency and looking at which students still need extra help on that, but it can be pulled out in a tutorial rather than a whole class. Barriers, I'd say one of the barriers we're having right now would be finding within the school day, the collaboration time. We do have 10 minimum days, and those are, I now send out administrative, so they don't need to hear from me as much as really spend time working together. But it has to be focused work, not just getting together. And I do expect minutes at the end, so that we can see if we're making progress in our targeted areas. The other big barrier, which I already mentioned, was the ability to stay for a seventh-period class. We'll be looking also at zero periods, but again, that's a transportation issue. The, we've tried to, we've tried to also look at how kids could carpool, so we've helped them out in that way. And other action items that we do, we have weekly student-study team meetings based on data, and we have mentors, we have the Isla Vista Homework Center, Boys and Girls Club, Pathways on campus in L.A., which is following kids specifically from Isla Vista to our school and then on to DP. So there's some continuity, and there's a lot of parent contact on that. Our data is showing that we're in the right direction. We still have a ways to go, we didn't meet the target, as I said, for the Latino population. And I look at that also as the same group as the low socioeconomic, because there's a mix there. So really trying to provide that support. All of our goals, everything that comes through Site Council, if you look at our expenditures, it's really spent on personnel, on getting those smaller class sizes. Really getting, at the beginning of the year, I talked to teachers and just said, how do you motivate kids? How do you engage them? How do you connect? And I passed out an article recently on some de For's work, and their research is showing the work has to be relevant for kids. You have to look at their prior knowledge, see what they already do know, make sure it's rigorous in college prep, that all students are able to reach that level, and build relationships with students. So we spend a lot of time on that as well. Our school climate, that we have houses, you can read about it on the website, it's a way just to have students connect. Each student comes into our school belonging to a house, to become part of the school culture. Each house is responsible for a dance, a community service project. This year, right now, we're doing a book drive, and all the kids are bringing in their books, they get house points for the books. And these are just big Tupperware containers in the front of the school with a house picture on it, and then we donate those books to the feeder schools. Our feeder schools, Galita Union School Districts, it's not Santa Barbara School District, so we try to build in that collaboration there. And then the final is lunchtime activity. Our lunchtime activities are, there's something happening every day. There's five days a week, noon sports activities, there's a place for everybody to go. We have over 20 clubs on campus. Great groups, great groups. One of our groups is Kids Speaking Up, which has also become part of our ADL peer leadership group. Recently, I asked the board to approve this peer leadership team, and I'm really proud of it, because, or we are really proud of it, this was really a team effort. On all four junior highs, sent 15 students and an advisor, and they all worked together in developing, developing some leadership and commonalities, and really looking at our community, and how we can be more involved with the community, how students can be leaders, not just in the leadership class, but leaders throughout campus. And the goal is to bring that, they spent two days, Friday and a Saturday, working through all sorts of activities, and then coming to the school site, and they'll be meeting weekly, each one has invited a friend. And then from there, we're trying to grow and build and bring in our club live group, our leadership group, our houses, and we'll see where it goes. It's all in the two-week-old phase, about, three, maybe three? Let's see. School leadership is focused all on student learning. Every meeting we have is focused on student learning. I think, and it's also in building the team. I'm starting the fourth year at Galita Valley, and it's nice to have some continuity at this school. This school's had a number of different administrators, and the continuity is really helping. Walk the talk, being in classrooms, I think the most powerful training I've taken, and I know we've all taken it, is the walk-through training. And the walk-through training really focuses on how to be in classrooms, how to get away from that ever-binding computer in your office and paper. So, I'm committed to spending two days in the classrooms every Tuesday and Thursday, I'm not in the office, and really utilizing my secretary a lot, much, much better. She does all the scheduling for, and so, and parents at PTA meetings now know, I'm just not available during 8:30 to 2:30, Mondays, Tuesdays and Thursdays. So, before school, after school, not even at lunchtime. And that makes a difference. And when I was first at the school, four years ago, an administrator coming into the classroom was kind of a barrier. And now, it's just, oh, come see this. So you're building trust, so that, and I think that's part of it. And also, building a culture of high expectations, culture of excellence, a culture of learning, that if you make a mistake as a teacher, it's okay, let's learn from it. When teachers look at the data, they're looking at the data and they're looking at test results. How did one class do well and this other class didn't? What did you do that I might incorporate? Building that kind of a learning community, where it's okay to make mistakes but learn from them, is huge. And I think teachers at our school definitely have opportunities to take on leadership roles, whether it's from being a house leader, the ADL peer leadership leader, lunchtime, there's so many leaders on our campus beyond even department chairs, leaders within teams, they meet not just in departments, but in grade-level teams. So, trying to build that, and all professional development comes back to the whole group. So if a student, if a teacher's are going off to a conference, the expectation is you'll come back and teach the rest of us. And we learn in that together. And as I said, most of our, the single-school plan, the school-site council, LEAP goals, everything is based on directly affecting students. And we look at academic achievement, our technology program, how it reinforces school climate, and professional development.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, thank you. I appreciate the thoroughness of your report. Board members, do we have questions? Ms. Balakov, would you like to start?
Well, I'm gonna ask everybody, but I want to ask about AVID, the AVID program, and you already kind of touched on that. We just went to the site visit, we went to Oxnard High School to see what they were doing.
Fantastic.
Yeah, so I'm just kind of curious about, in junior high, the problem is with seventh grade is finding time in the schedule, is that?
Right. Well, that's why for this year, and I already have three teachers who are fighting over wanting to be the AVID teacher for next year, for the tutorial in seventh grade. This year, because we were, we already had our master schedule, our master schedule's pretty much done by June. We try to have it 95 percent done, so what, but we didn't want to let it go. So that's why the teachers have come together and said, well, we really need something for seventh grade, we need to get these goals started now, and how do we entice the kids? We had a real natural group with the, in L.A., in Pathways Group, that were coming from Isla Vista, so that was our targeted group. There's about 10 students.
There's about 10 stu-, 12 students there. The other is, we offered it as a lunchtime, come, come here about it. And they had some presenters talking about colleges and field trips and would you be willing to come? We'll, we'll pay for lunch. So pizza was, goes a long way in candy. So kids came.
No candy.
We had so, not in elementary, but junior. No, okay. But, so we now have a good group of about 22 students and it's growing. This is, you know, just no member. And, and students starting to recognize, wow, it's nice to have a support group, somebody who even does something as simple, I have a seventh grader myself, the binder check. Help me clean it out. Help me organize. Help me with my goals. I think the academic portfolio is huge. I like that it's on the second page of the agenda because when any teacher opens it up, doesn't even have to go to the computer to check anything out, it's right there, as well as the interventions. What could I do to improve? Look how smart I am, but I didn't do all my homework. What, do I need the weekly progress reports to help keep me connected? Some kids just love that. The other is looking at Easy Grade Pro. I love that, that you can break it down to where's, where's the area that you're having difficulty? Wow, you're really a good test taker, but homework is slipping and finishing classwork and maybe you could utilize some other resource. Having those kind of conversations with kids that aren't punitive, but they're really based on data. And students like looking at the data. Oh, gosh, I would have just, and I always show the kids, you know, 19 out of 20 or 17 out of 20 or 15 out of 20. If you could have just had two more questions, studied a little bit more in this area, what would help? They also like tools. And I think Avid is all about tools.
Do you have tutors for, in the Avid program, in the eighth, last, first question, eighth grade? How, is it like a regular class where you have thirty students?
I have right now four tutors specifically for math and-
For the, the tutors are within your Avid program or within the-
Through the whole school.
School through the whole school?
And I'm focusing on the college prep. Not, it's not necessarily the gate and it's not necessarily the resource, but it's that, that college prep group. And all of the teachers have data rosters, they know their students, they know who's an EL student, who's a Title I student, special ed in their class, where they need to sit. One of the top strategies, sit in the front row. Ask clarifying questions, Bloom's taxonomy, you know, all those higher level, getting, getting kids to work as partners, small groups, vocab key ring cards, just all the tools, the KWL, what do you already know? Kids, especially English language learners, think they don't know anything. And then when they can write out with the, this, I do really know a lot about this information, the confidence starts building. And once you have confidence, you can ask questions. So I think training your tutors as well is huge.
The tutors are in the after-school program and the-
As well.
You have them as well? Where do you get all these tutors from?
I have a good relationship with UCSB.
And that's where you're getting, is that what you went by?
I'm getting kids that, I call them kids, but they, math majors, so with the math department-
At UCSB.
At UCSB. Melissa Ross has been real helpful. City College has been helpful. But what I'm looking for are BA math majors. And I, and I start in the summer. Actually, I start all year, but I really focus in the summer so I can have it in place. And some of the tutors are kids who are going to school, so they can't be there five days a week, three days a week. And our big focus days are, not on Friday, but it's definitely Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Monday, teacher gives the instructions, but definitely Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Our after-school tutorial is Monday through Thursday. And then math coaches, there is a math coach, periods one through seven. Some I've hired in the morning, some in the afternoon, some five through seven, but I make sure that there's, and, and the math department decides where they're going to put them in. But every one of the tutors has a binder and the binder has the data rosters for the students so they can identify which are, and I said, focus on your threes. Doesn't mean you can't help anybody else, but definitely focus on, on the kids that are scoring at basic or just even if you look at the, the range on the proficiency levels. I mean, you can just barely make it into proficient. It's a huge range, so giving them support.
We just went through the elementary school districts and the schools and most of them, it was the other way around where the target is in, the needed work is in English and that they're higher in math. Any, I mean, how, how is this?
Algebra. It's the algebra, I mean, I can remember algebra being difficult for junior high kids when I was going through school. And the expectation is that all students in eighth grade learn algebra. And, and going back through the grades, my background's K-8, so we were looking at the algebra strands early on in the elementary program as well. It's much, you know, once they get through sixth grade, it, it becomes much more difficult, I'd say, in the eighth grade. Seventh graders are still pretty, they're okay. But the eighth grade concepts are abstract and how to really get good instruction that children really understand. I think when, a few people have asked me, what's the biggest barrier? And it's finding, finding highly qualified teachers. I went three times this summer to the table for math.
I was gonna ask, the other way around is how, how is it that English is doing so well?
Great team, great team. We actually, in, in the English department, the, there's, there's a lot of support there and it's also 60% of the exam. And they work together. I think the writing across the curriculum is really working, having all students reading rich literature, the focus on vocabulary, departments working together.
My last question is actually for Dr. Hayden. When will we know the, it seemed like all the schools had a problem with the socioeconomic disadvantage data. Will that be coming out soon or will we find that? Sorry.
I've done all the data corrections and I could give a preliminary answer to every school if they wanted it, but the actual official results will come out, I believe the end of January, somewhere around there.
I believe we should wait for the official results to come out.
Yeah, I agree with that. But all the data corrections are in.
We know how we think they will end up, but we'd better be sure that the state thinks that as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. That touched on a question I was gonna ask too, and I just wanna follow up on it really quickly and then I'll go to Ms. Rodriguez. And I think you, you may have actually answered this, when you were talking about your, your math coaches, you said you have math coaches, Cal Soap tutors and AmeriCorps tutors. And you said your math coaches are not necessarily credential teachers, but they're all math majors and I, and I was one-
They have a BA in math.
Okay, so that's actually the question I was gonna ask you, because you said they were BA math majors, meaning they already have achieved their BA.
They already have achieved their BA.
Ah, okay, so, and those are mostly, as you said, college students who are graduate students then?
Right.
Okay, and that, actually, that was just a quick follow-up I wanted to-
Kids relate well to them, most of them as well.
Yeah, I, I agree.
I always tell the-
They're close enough in age.
Right, and I also always tell the coaches, don't wait for a student to ask the question. They won't ask the question. Be looking for the student who has that look.
Ms. Rodriguez, did you have questions you wanted to ask?
Thank you for your presentation. First question is actually something that I was questioning across the board, well, certainly on yours, I have to look back at the others, but this is a formatting thing. On the number of the goals, there's, at the end, the way this is set up in the system, you're asked at the end, funding source and allocated resources to a program. And in cases, many cases, you say no funding allocated. Can I just get a clarification on that? That just means you're using your existing staff resources to accomplish the goal and you're not using additional resources. Is that correct?
It can be two, two different ways. Yes, that's correct. In some cases, you can, for example, I'm, a perfect example is the seventh period tutorial. I'm using KC funds to be able to pay for that, so I don't have to allocate that money. It's paying for a teacher or for the tutor. That, so I wouldn't put in a dollar amount for that there. Another area would be that I'm using, well, I did include it in one area, but it may not be in another area. All of my, the coaches are working either in college prep English classes or in the college prep math and algebra classes. It might, I might take a funding source from one area, being Title I or from ELAP or from EIA, but I mix it up. In fact, the computer technician, I pay for two, two different pots of money. So that's when I put zero, it's, I'm taking nothing from this area, but I am, it's kind of complicated. But the end, I think, I guess it's being creative so that you can get the most bang for your buck. And like, for example, the AmeriCorps tutor, which is a wonderful, wonderful resource, they really pay quite a bit. I'm only paying 4,700 for AmeriCorps, two AmeriCorps tutors.
That's great. I think, I wonder if there's a way that we can have people answer the question, no categorical funds allocated? I don't know if, if somebody's just reading this and don't know.
No categorical.
It, it just says no funding allocated, so-
Okay.
It makes it look like-
It's a good idea.
I agree.
Like if we didn't provide funding, it's not going to happen.
Yeah, so that was just a curiosity about the formatting, not-
The other is, this is a learning curve this year.
Right.
So any, any feedback for us for next year, that would be really appreciated.
The other, the other thing that happens, it did in my plan anyways, is that we would have, I funded something, I put the amount under one goal, but I, it also fits in another goal. So it could be, say, the zero seventh period tutorials, that's, applies to the math goal, proficiency goal and the English Language Arts. And if you didn't split it up in half, then one would say zero and one would say the whole amount.
Is it possible in the program to say C, you know, or funding split? Can you do that?
Yeah, in my plan, I put, if I funded it out of SIP, then it said that in the allocation and then I put in parentheses, EIA and Title I, so that, that was kind of a reference that those are two other areas I paid for the other two thirds. So that's, there are some ideas, but it is kind of complicated.
And I know sometimes these programs aren't that flexible, you, you're given a certain number of characters you can type in.
Yeah.
That's right.
Beyond that, you know, it's, and it's like frustrating because you can't tell your whole story with that limitation. I had a question on the, the science proficiency goal. There's not a lot of information there and I know science has been sort of a challenge for, for the elementary schools as well. Could you elaborate a little bit more on, on that and, you know, what you're doing?
Well, in science, the, science has been interesting for us in the sense that we also have the health, the health component within there. We split our health between science as well as NPE. So the science, PE and math have worked together. And with science being on the exam now, which is great because they pay attention to a lot more on the standards there, they've done a really good job in breaking down assignments, working within the seventh grade team, working within the eighth grade team, making sure which units are covered appropriately and then also looking at their midterms and finals and how it now aligns. They, this is for that department, the third year with midterms and finals, but they didn't have the science test. Now they have the science test, so they're backwards mapping. Edgysop is gonna be helpful in that arena as well. As far as the goals going, they were, they're, they're progressing pretty steadily and they're really looking at how they can help support mathematics, the health requirement and even the writing component.
I guess I've just been curious to see with the science testing and I guess this is a national issue that students aren't performing, performing up to our expectations in science and that could be for a lot of different reasons, but I was just wondering if the lack of seventh period day has contributed to that in any way or-
Oh, the lack of seventh period day has contributed to everything. Electives, supports, and it's, it's unfortunate that we don't have that. But our, our science department's really strong, very strong, and they've done pretty well on the, on the exams. I think what's really helped them is looking at key vocabulary and then mathematical components. And our science classes are very active and in walking through, you'll see posters, a lot of writing in that department as well. And people that I take through say, wow, they really do do a lot of writing. So they cover everything.
Okay, thank you.
Let me, since you commented on the seventh period day, I, I think you should also describe what the three FD, additional FTEs do provide for the school.
Absolutely.
Because we often give the impression that that all disappeared and actually, the district's still spending a lot of money to provide additional electives.
We really value the elective programs. And the elective programs, we've been given three FTEs to make sure that we offer a strong program. I know we have probably the strongest band program in, in schools. And we've also done outreach with our elementary schools. So our band program hosts a lot of students. A lot of the students who take a seventh period day, it's because they want an extra elective. We have a seventh grade elective wheel, so all students are either in a industrial technology wheel with computer, computer technology, keyboarding and industrial technology or they're in a arts wheel with performing arts, art and, and computer applications. So all of them have exposure in seventh grade. If they are in additional class for band or chorus or performing arts or, then a lot of those students will come zero period before school or attend a seventh period PE. So we have about 200 kids right now, over 200, in seventh period, counting the tutorials, counting the two PEs, so there's 90 kids there in PE and also I offer two Spanish classes. That help answer that?
Thank you.
Thank you. A couple other quick questions, sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead, go ahead.
The participation, I, I like these new tables or the tables that are in here on, at the, on page one at the back where it talks about increased participation across demographic spectrum. And I was just interested in the Latino enrollment. It's been kind of interesting, 14% and then kind of a dip down to 6% and then back up to 11.2%. And I just was wondering what specific things you've been doing to encourage the participation in the advanced classes? It's still obviously has a ways to go.
I think it's the outreach and looking at, when we get the data and looking at how students are doing, we're trying to identify students who could do well but may not have the confidence. And the counselors go through, check out which students are scoring, you know, proficient or advanced and could be successful in, in a gate course. And once they're, you know, either, whether they've tested it or not, we try to leave a little window open for, for those students. If they're doing well in that course, definitely take the test. And, but, but it is an outreach and it's an outreach, teacher recommendation, counselors looking at students that participate as well.
You had a program-
And meeting with families.
A couple of years ago, we had a presentation from a teacher, Mr., is it Green?
Oh, yes.
That was working with students across the ability level in courses. Is that program still, is that still happening?
What happened, that was, we had a, a pilot program going called, and it was a team of seventh grade students, there were four teachers in the team. And we ended up, the team placed a lot of constraints on this, on the entire master schedule. The concern that we ended up having is in the team, there weren't any special ed students and there were only students that were in that, that college prep range. So what happened is other classes may have, would, for example, a science class would have 15 special ed students in it because they weren't in the team. So we ended up disbanding the team to a degree. We have still teams between social studies and English. We still have students that will be in the same classes for science and for math, but not all four of the courses.
One final question, sorry. Actually, just an observation that your students with special, your students with disabilities have had pretty substantial increases in their-
We're real proud of it.
Test scores, which is-
Real proud of that. In fact, whenever we, I look at data, I'm always looking for the, you know, the stairs and we want the stairs to go up. And to watch the students with disabilities, I mean, from '03, '04, 8.9, 12.2, 13.1 in English Language Arts. And then for math, it went higher, it was 3.3 in '03, '04, which is sad.
Yeah.
9.1 in '04, '05 to 15.6 in '05, '06. Really strong teachers, really strong teachers.
Have you changed at all the, the testing? In other words, are more students taking the Kappa that might not do well on the CST or is, nothing's changed, you're just-
No, direct instruction. And special ed students also have an II class, an individualized instruction class, and we've organized those II classes so that there's direct instruction going on, it's not just a homework help class. And again, vocabulary, vocabulary, whatever vocabulary, the discipline, the II classes will help reinforce that vocabulary so that a student in a special education science class, or not science class, but a special education student in a science class who may have some reading difficulties already will have access to the curriculum through vocabulary. And I think that's been real helpful in the school-wide, across the board.
Okay, thank you.
Just to add on to that, talk about steps on page 22, on page 22, and you were saying about algebra and you've made a huge step there. That looks like quite a bit of progress.
That's why, and I ask my teachers or the math department, they write out a list in the summer and I said, how, at the bottom of the list, after they've done their focus goals, analyze the data, develop focus goals, there's a spot that says resources. goals, analyze the data, develop focus goals, there's a spot that says resources. And what, what do you need? And number one, number one for them is the math coaches. Number two, or actually, they're a tie, that after school, mandatory after school tutorials right there. And then any professional development for some of the newer teachers.
Well, I had a couple, that one is kind of touched on one of the questions I had, but I wanted to go back to what you were just mentioning about you, in looking at, oh, first of all, I'm sorry, I'm jumping around here, but I apologize. First of all, the numbers you just gave us were a little bit different than the ones that are in our packet. Do those represent an update? When you were saying, for example, the students with disabilities numbers, you list, the numbers you were giving us for 2005, 2006 are different from the ones that are in our packet.
That's because I'm looking at the socioeconomically disadvantaged group. It's added on this one, and that's, you have the updated version.
Oh, we have the updated version, okay.
You have the updated version.
Okay, and then-
There were two given, one in the summer and then an updated version, and you have the updated.
It was even better than what you said.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. These numbers are better. I had a question regarding, you've touched on a lot of the interventions that you do, and they were identified in the packet, and, and that they seem to be very positive strategies that are being used and very specifically targeted to the students who are in the most, or in, in need. But when looking at, just this first page where we, and even, well, even later in just the one we were looking at about math, there seems to be, the, the achievement gap seems to be remaining constant. There doesn't seem to be much of a change in the gap between the highest achieving students and the lower achieving students. Each segment is going up, which we certainly are happy to see. But we're not, we don't seem to be closing the gap. Do you have any sense of, of why that is or how? Well, let me just say, what are your comments on that?
I'd say one of the big pushes that we're, and why we're doing so many different things as a district right now, is because we've done things and we've made progress, but the gap is still there. So we've really focused on specific strategies as a district. And I applaud the district for spending the money on taking the kids, the teachers to the Avid conference. That was an expensive conference. Did we get a lot out of it? Absolutely. We're working at it now. So I'm hoping that some of the strategies we're learning from there, the analysis of data, we have been analyzing data, but we're much more focused now. We're much more focused on our subgroups than we were three years ago. Three years ago, or four years ago even, you didn't, we looked at the different subgroups, but we didn't expect teachers to continually go back and look every quarter or every week, every month, you know, on specific areas and what they would do differently. Building a culture where it's working for this teacher but not for this teacher. What strategies are you using? Can I come and observe in your classroom? Be much more collaborative, much, that's really improving. And that has to make a difference, developing these professional learning communities. I think departments in the past have been given time to work, but not as much time. And so that's why I say one of our biggest barriers that we've been looking at has been finding the collaboration time. And it can't happen just monthly. It has to really happen weekly. Those are all new strategies, and we hope that they make a difference in closing that. You look at your 90, 90, 90 schools. There's, there's a consistent, the school plan, continuously analyzing the school plan, that's, that's new. Looking at it, bringing it to every school site council, the involvement of the site council, the LEAP goals, the monthly CPM meetings, those are all new strategies. And they make a difference. And other schools that are reaching the 90, 90, 90, they're utilizing those tools. And I really have to give some applause here to Cynthia White, still here? Yeah? She's been awesome about researching, Jan, Cynthia, they've even been going to different conferences, saying, all these 90, 90 schools seem to have these areas. Edgesoft is one, single plan, writing across the curriculum, advisory is another one, collaboration time. It's working. So let's, let's hope we come to the table next year, and I'm counting on it, that the gap is closing at a faster rate.
Well, I mean, that's something that I think we're all kind, we're all working on and have been frustrated by, and I, I know that it's a, it's a priority and a goal for everybody. My other question, which is a totally different subject, in looking through some of your goals and your, your plan, it, it's clear that you were doing some things to, to do outreach and especially with the Latino parents and Latino families. But then in looking at your site council members, if I, and I, and again, it's, it's sometimes dangerous to assume by people's names what their ethnicity is, but just by, just going by names, there don't, there doesn't appear to be Latino representation on your site council.
You're right.
Is there anything being done to?
I think with, site council, to be honest with you, it's been hard getting members. Where in the past, it used to be much easier, but there's much more responsibility on site council and the kind of work that they're looking at, the data that they're looking at. I, I asked all the communities, the PTA, ELAC, calling on the telephone, different, different areas. Last year I did have a Latino representation on there, Mrs. Oribey. This year, I wasn't able to get that. So that means I have to do more outreach in making sure that the Latino community also is aware of what this plan is. There's extra copies that I can go to the meetings and be able to share what the plan is and get their input that way. But yeah, you're right.
This is actually, I think, an issue for, for most of our schools. We certainly, we raised it at, you know, with the elementary schools, we see it in the other junior highs and high schools. I think there's, you're, you're all familiar with NCCJ's work.
Yes.
And they have a program that deals specifically with making boards and, and committees more diverse. It's a, it's a really deep commitment because you have to really examine what the culture is of the board, what, in terms of everything that could possibly be considered a barrier to diversity, whether it's the time they meet, or the place they meet, or who's already on it, what, whatever it is. And I think, but I think this is a, a really important issue, especially as we look at trying to narrow the, the achievement gap. And also because we keep looking at the demographics of our schools. And the leadership often doesn't, the school leadership often doesn't reflect the demographics. And I think as we're, especially also as we're trying to get more students into the advanced level courses, and I, in looking at, at that data again, which we just looked at a second ago, we see that it's been a little bit of an improvement, or, I mean, I guess we could say, you know, describe it differently, whether we think it's a little or a lot. But I think, from, from my point of view, it's not as much of an improvement as we'd like to see. And I think that perhaps making that change in the, and this is really, I guess, a comment for everybody, making that change in other areas of the school that really impact, it's, I think it's part of the climate really is important. Because I look at, and really in everybody's report, you look at it and you, people, schools are making, I think, heroic efforts to really improve scores and, and narrow the gap, et cetera. And I, and yet we're seeing it persist in a lot of ways. And so I think maybe there's other places we need to be targeting as well.
I think also looking at your Avid classes, you know, a lot of it is building that culture and recognizing and pushing students to be able to be successful. You can do this. And it's, and involving the parents with that as well. And having students very goal oriented and seeing, and building on their success, I think, is one avenue to look at. The ADL peer leadership group was another group that was really targeting that representation. And if you looked at our mix of students, it was, it was great.
In the leadership, in the ADL leadership?
On the ADL leadership, if you looked at our mix of 60 students, it was very diverse, very diverse. And at our school, the kids were selected by the teachers, and we only could take 15. I wish I could have taken more. But the 15 that went were the ones that were highly recommended by more than one teacher. And it was a, a real great range. I have photos that at some point we'll do a PowerPoint, or I can bring kids to a board meeting, or we can bring kids to a, a meeting to talk to you about some of the things that they're doing. They're awesome.
We had the high school ones recently.
Yes, for the high school.
And that was separate from the summer leadership camp, right?
Yes, yes.
And what was the, what was the demographics like in the summer leadership camp?
Very diverse, very diverse. And the real target for the, the real target for that group, and again, we're in our third year of that one, we're going to change it a little bit for next year, but we're really trying to build outreach, since we have a completely different school district, in getting the kids to come in and feel comfortable. So we want primarily seventh grade students, a lot of Avid strategies, a lot of focus on hands-on fun, learn the skills, learn how, good test taking, learn how to be organized, how to be a leader, there's a leadership component with that. And then for the eight, so that's the seventh grade focus. For the eighth graders, it might be a student who was unsuccessful D or F, and tie in some leadership. So two different goals there.
And then staying with that for just one more second, I, I really believe that one of the ways that we need to diversify the leadership is by making a connection between site council and ELAC. Because we get parents involved in ELAC, but they don't seem to, there's often a real disconnect between the two groups. Do you have any plans? I was noticing, for example, the Latino night, which seems like a, a great thing for bringing Latino parents on to, you know, to campus.
Well- well-attended.
Et cetera. But it, I wondered if it's pretty homogeneous.
It was a mixed group, actually.
Was it?
Yeah, it was-
That bring ELAC and site council together at all?
There really aren't. Rather than, you know, I go to ELAC and I go to the school site council and share that representation. And at, but as far, the two groups, no.
Okay.
They're always invited. Everyone's invited to the school site council, as is everyone invited to the ELAC. So it's a, it's a, definitely a focus area.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you very much. We've, we've put you on the hot seat long enough, we'll let you off now. And I think we're going to take a second because Chris needs to-
I have a minute, so I just want to-
Oh, so you're already set up? Okay, great. So-
We can take a break.
Oh, we can take a quick break, yes, sure. Okay, well, that's just because we like each other so much. We all want to talk and socialize. We don't get to see each other enough. Although certainly board members don't feel like that recently, do we? All the meetings we've been having. Okay, well, this brings us to La Colina Junior High School. And again, Mr. Zettel will introduce-
Thank you, Mrs. Cordero. I'd like to now introduce David Ortiz, our principal of longstanding at La Colina Junior High. David?
Good morning. It's my honor to represent our site council from La Colina Junior High School and in our entire school community this morning. I did want to share a brief story. I do all the, this basically the same presentation to all of our school groups, and I did it to ASB. That one lasted about 20 minutes. Hopefully, this will, report will be a little bit shorter. And at the end, one of the kids said, hey, hey, Mr. Ortiz, what was that all about? I said, it's about that we're doing good. Because why don't you just say that? So that's actually my start. We are doing pretty well at La Colina Junior High School. And I did want to start off with, with a vision for La Colina Junior High School. I've always said that the greatest reform of all is the culture of the school. And you will see that in our plan, you will hear me talk about it time and time again, that it's about the culture and climate of the school. And if it's safe, if there's discipline, if there's organization, and I'm going to talk a little bit about inclusion and the level of influence, prosperity will happen. And I wanted to, to set the context of our vision, and there's different elements. We are a school of high rigor. That means we have high expectations. There's relevance, it meets the students' needs, that means their interests and what they need to, to be able to accomplish when they go on into their future pathways. Access, that means that all students have access to all programs. Now, we've talked about gate and honors and all these different programs here, but it's our job to make sure that each student has opportunity, the, the support during lunch, after school, before school, during the day, to get into these programs. Safety, that we have a safe, healthy, and organizing, again, disciplined environment, that the leadership, starting with the principals, starting with me, through the assistant principals, counselors, the teachers, the PTSA, ELAC, for our community, that's English Language Advisory Committee, that there's communication, collaboration, and we adhere to the contractual agreements that we agree to. That's not a formal contract, board members, that's basically, in many instances, a promise, and we adhere to that. And we really focus on responsibility, as we all should, do the right thing at the right time. And it sounds really simplistic, but that's really a hard thing to accomplish, but that should be a goal for all of us. And lastly, I wanted to point out that at the core of this plan that I turned over to you folks were these, were the budgets, the allocations, and that all the expenditures are legal, all the expenditures are accurate. And when we are confused, in Ms. Rogers' presentation a minute ago, the compliment was made that this is very complex, it is very complex. Our superintendents will, will tell you that. The administrative directors will tell you that. So when there's a problem, we turn to them. Mr. Gonzalez, Ms. White, Dr. Hayden, can you explain this to me? So I want the board to understand that this is accurate. We have a variety of goals. Certainly, English Language Arts, which is about 60% of the tests, math. English learners, getting them to proficiency or higher as soon as we possibly can. We also have a, a special goal this year, students with disabilities. I hope you looked at that information. Our students with disabilities, and Ms. Rodriguez, you asked a question about that earlier, they went down in math and English. And, and so we have a plan to hopefully resolve that issue. And again, most of our plan is built around the culture. Now, we have three interventions, they're not necessarily new, but they've been around, one in a sense for many years, but not to the point it should be, and that's the professional learning community. We refer to that as a PLC. So please pardon me if I start getting into the accurate PLC, IEP, you know, all this and that. It's, it's not working by departments. It's working in small teams that have a specific focus. And that is our mission. We have very organized, detailed department plans. I want the community to know that we lesson plan together, we do enrichment activities together, we do remediation together, we do homework together, all these plans, technology, everything is put together as a professional learning community team. So that is the main focus this year. I believe it should be the main focus every year, and that's, that's really a systemic change that we have to have in our schools today. The other intervention that has been led in the direction of Mr. Gonzalez and Ms. White is the alignment to the LEAP plan. And as you look at that LEAP plan, and I would want the community to know, there's all kinds of requirements. We are in the process of aligning with each of those requirements. And with that, we will continue this positive growth pattern that is reflected in our data. And we've already talked about Avid, advancement via individual determination, that program has been around for years. We had it, we went away from it, we went to a reach program, our district program, and we've returned to it. And it has paid huge- And it has paid huge dividends. Dr. Malkoff, you went to a visit, I mean, Oxnard High School, wow, very, very powerful. We've also had a high focus on writing. I brought in a consultant, Sherri Henderson. Ms. Henderson is actually a language arts teacher down in San Diego area. And the reason I brought in, and let me fix my, my microphone seeking here, we brought in, it's an age thing. But, but what we brought in Ms. Henderson is because she is one of the writers of our whole textbook series. And what she's done is she's put together a writing program that, that aligns with our textbook. Which, by the way, I want to also add, and our superintendents know this, but I want the board to know this, that when you vote on a program, and that's really helped to continue the positive growth, we do that program and we stay true to it. We do it the way it's designed to be done. And that's, and I think that's been highly instrumental in getting more positive results. Strengths of La Colina, I believe it's, it's been our community. We have a very strong community. We really push on involvement. We've had discussions about how to get the diverse subgroups involved in, in the mainstream. You invite them. You call them. You said, "Come over and meet with us." We have relationships, we have conversations, and pretty soon, as we develop those skills and that connection, they will begin to appear on our campus and at all the, the meetings, the site council, the ELAC, the PTSA, they will be there. But you have to go out there and get them and make them feel welcome. Barriers, I want the board to know very clearly that in the future, if we start to lose funding and we start to lose time, that will compromise the professional learning community, the Avid, and the advancement towards LEAP, which you know is a legal requirement, that will be a very strong barrier. Our actions, we plan to work more diligently on perfecting the PLC. We've been doing it for a number of years. We have a long way to go. Our teachers are to be commended. They work in their PLCs each Thursday. We go from eight fifteen to nine fifteen. Data analysis, curriculum, instruction, and assessment. That's all we do. So what I want you to hear is that it's, it's, well, it's complex, but the plan is simple. Data analysis, curriculum, instruction, and assessments. We do that together. Again, we were proud of our data overall. We have a concern with students with disabilities. I've talked to Dr. Hayden about that. The main intervention we're doing there is we have gotten the teachers, instructors, aligned with their counterparts. For example, their English Language Arts, mathematics counterparts. They were having their own PLC. So that could be a compromise in understanding and implementing the activities to achieve the respective standards. So, I mean, that, that hopefully is big. Certainly, that's not the answer. Certainly, the problem is much more complex than involving them with some other groups. Our SMART goals, and those are the goals that have detail to them. Well, the way we set those goals in our site councils, we look at the trends, and we've been increasing by five to six percentage points every year. That's how we set our goal. Now, the toughest goal is the students with disabilities, because we can't set a goal of five or six percent. We actually have to set a goal much higher. So our work to support those students and to educate the parents to get them involved is really cut out for us, and that's going to involve a lot of work this year. So we have to make up what we lost, and, and that's a really important task. School leadership, it's shared decision-making, it's inclusion, it's raising the influence. If you're at La Colina and you're a parent or a student or staff member, you will be And sometimes Mr. Ortiz will say, "You will be involved." But it's really that important, and we do, we make our decisions, we run our school as a team. I love the commendation, but I love the fact that anybody can come in at any time and say, "David, we've got an issue." That's the adult sentence the kids still say, Mr. Ortiz. And that's a real... So we do things as a team. I would invite any of you to come out to see our program. We have similar intervention programs as the other junior high schools, but I really would like to promote and recommend the institution of the professional learning community. And again, it's a systemic change, it's a fantastic intervention, it is not new, but we can do a lot better at it. Okay? Are there any questions?
Well, I'm sure we have questions. We always have questions. Ms. Rodriguez, would you want, like, to start this time?
That was very quick.
Yes.
This is the new David Ortiz.
Who's taking you to dinner tonight now, David? Because you win.
I thought his initial story would be...
One question I had is, is actually just a formatting thing with, two of you had the data included in the plan and two of you did not, just the test scores and the, the information. I was wondering where that is for La Colina?
Well, we will get that to you, but we were following the plan, Ms. Rodriguez. We were not only putting the plan together, we are learning the software, and we followed it line item by line item. So I apologize for that. We will get you that, that data. So in my reference to positive trends and growth and meeting targets, we did, we will get you that information, but I would want you to know that API, the targets that we did not meet would be students with disabilities. And in math, that was fourteen percentage points, and in, in ELA, English Language Arts, is nine point one percentage points. But we, in all other categories, we improved about five or six percent. Our API went up sixteen points, and we met all of our targets at AYP. So we'll get you that information.
Okay. I, I know we've seen the data in different ways, but it's nice to have it at the...
Oh, absolutely.
Beginning of the single plan for the, not only for the board to have it again, but also for the public when they're reviewing the document.
Okay, I, I actually, our committee, when I take that back to them and report that information, they will be, I would be safe to describe them as being shocked because we followed the plan verbatim and went right through it. Who, who is the other school?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure.
Well, I got the information from John.
We inserted our graphs from the school plan data piece, but I wasn't aware there was another piece that was supposed to go in that plan.
Here's La Colina.
Oh, thank you.
And we'll get Santa Barbara Junior High to you as well.
Oh, I believe those were the data sheets that Mr., or that Dr. Hayden provided.
Yes.
And I appreciate the fact this is a different format, and our old format had, was very data-rich. I mean, we had lots of tables and lots of information. We could look back and see disaggregated scores and things. And so I found it very helpful for the two schools that included it to have that right there, so I could refer back to it. And so, I mean, not a criticism of you, just for future reference, I think it would be good for all the schools to be encouraged. If it's not part of the software, then they just need to, somebody needs to put them in our packet when we're reviewing it.
Well, when we met on it, and actually, that type of discussion came up, and we obviously made an erroneous assumption that there are these links and the people could click on it and the board members included and look at this information. So when we went through that plan, you really didn't call for it. So we didn't do it.
But you're right, this is a, this is a great piece of information because it's five of the focus groups. So we'll make sure of that.
I also was interested, Ms. Rogers started off with her enrollment, and it's always interesting to know what the enrollment is. I now can't recall what, did you drop as well?
No. We, we're still over a thousand, thousand, five, four, three, right, right in there. And probably sitting at about two hundred and fifty transfers right in there. So our enrollments remain consistent, we're right there this year. So...
I had a question. You addressed it a little bit, and so did you, about articulation down with your feeder schools. What about up? What, what are some of the things? And any of you could answer that question, but I'm just interested. Typically, we talk about that a little bit in these meetings.
Well, I'll start off and I'll pass it off to Mr. Beckio. We have had a long, longstanding relationship with our feeder school system. At La Colina, we have the three HOPE schools and we have four GLEDA schools. And our main high school feeder school is San Marcos High School. And I would, Dr. Hayden, what, I mean, who would know, seventy-five, right in the percent usually go on, matriculate to San Marcos High School, and then fifteen, twenty percent to Dos Pueblos High School, and then about five percent. And if we probably add it up, I'm already a hundred percent, but that's besides the point. Go to Santa Barbara High School. And it seems like more kids are going over to Santa Barbara High School. All the high schools have some very enriched programs, and the kids are, are saying, "Hey, I want to be in, in, involved in this program or that program." So it's starting to spread out a little bit. But we do have an ongoing relationship with regularship with San Marcos High School. We exchange a, a six-year plan. So, and it's all articulated in a, in a two, well, actually, a one-page handout. So as, if you're a parent, you can see very clearly and easily, these, this is the pathway. And I personally have meetings with all the principals on a regular basis at La Colina and going over to the feeder schools. I also provide a packet of information relative to co-curricular and extracurricular activities, but most importantly, I provide them with a copy of our department plans, which are built in the PLCs that are very specific, so they know the textbooks, the standards, the staff, all that information.
Is there discussion about the single plans and for the incoming ninth graders coming out of your school, and for all of you, is there discussion about the areas of strength and weakness and how the high schools can be prepared for that coming in, when the kids come in?
Absolutely. And Mr. Morgan, I believe the high school principals are going to present Tuesday evening. We meet with administration. The councils are very close, we're meeting at the council level and we're meeting at the department chair level. And as, well, at our principals' council yesterday, we talked, and we need to figure this out as a district, we have to talk a little bit more about the, the schedule of, you know, like a bell schedule and late starts and that sort of thing. So as we move on to our future, we can look at even more articulation, just as, as a board and a superintendent and as principals, it's going to take some time to figure that out.
Okay, thank you. Did anybody else want to add to that?
I was just going to add that if you look on our website, there's the six-year plan with Dos Pueblos. And Dos Pueblos has a new principal this year, but in, in the past, we have met, not only between our schools, the department chairs have met together to make sure that our students in algebra are going into ninth grade, how many are being successful, to the point that we've, and Dr. Hayden's helped with this as well, we've looked at our ninth grade scores to see how well are our students doing and what do we need to do to help prepare them even better. The other is we've met with GLEDA Union School District. We haven't as of yet this year with the, and there are new principals. They've had a couple of new principals this year. So that'll be important, as well as having the teachers meet. Last year, they met, the sixth grade teachers came over to our school, and we shared with them what, how their students could be successful. And they're actually following some of our similar, we gave them the writing rubric, math expectations, algebra components, and the big push again, which goes throughout my presentation, was vocabulary. Use, use the common vocab, vocabulary of the discipline.
I was just going to comment that Paul and I have been meeting regularly since the beginning of the school year, and we're meeting next week because really our, our master schedule is, depends on what they're offering, for example, in math. So next week, I'm going to talk to him about what his new math offerings are going to be, and then that'll affect our placement of our kids. But my vision for that and articulation is as we move into the data teams, where we're actually having our standards-based assessments and then, and then analyzing our own data, we will be able to pass that on to the departments at the, or the teams at the high school, so that they're not waiting for, or using seventh grade data from the CST, they're actually using real-time information about standards that, you know, our kids are coming to them with, having, having met those standards or not met those standards. So that's, that's my vision for that articulation.
Do you all have a six-year plan, or is that? Have we seen those in a board brief? It would just be interesting to see what that looks like.
I don't think it's on our website.
If we could get a copy, an example, or, or all four of them in our board brief at some point, that would be great. Thank you.
Well, the other thing that we should forward is not only this, like a standard six-year plan, but certainly relative to what we're trying to focus on here today is how English learners would factor in, in all the different configurations that can arise in, in that sense. So it's not, Ms. Rodriguez, just sending over, this is what you take in seventh grade, eighth grade, like that, because our English learners could come in at, at different points, so breakout points. And at some point, we have to limit it, because it can't, we can't have, you know, zillions of papers, but we can also forward that to you as well.
Thank you.
La Cumbre Junior High splits between San Marcos and Santa Barbara, about two-thirds to San Marcos. Last spring, we held a, a very important, very large articulation meeting with San Marcos to talk specifically about the English offerings for ninth graders, as English nine is the gatekeeper to a four-year college. And we met with the English and ESL departments, and they did, San Marcos did make some adjustments in their ninth grade English offerings, providing support, but still offering English nine. La Cumbre also scheduled their minimum days the same day as San Marcos, so that we can hold future meetings. We've been articulating with our elementary schools, but both ways as well.
Thank you very much.
You can go ahead, Dr. Malkoff, if you'd like.
Well, I just wanted to follow on that question.
Sure.
Was, was something at La Colina was the, when you have the three, it was an assembly where three high school students from each of the high schools come and they try to sell their school and tell what you should do. I just love that. Well, I don't know if you do that anymore.
Well, we, we do do that. We, we try to minimize the bragging. We would like to frame it in the context of sharing, again, because what we believe is that all three of our, our, our high schools have very rich programs and there's something there for everybody, so.
But the message, yeah.
We try to tone it down on, on the competitive element.
The, the message is always get involved in their high school, and it's a wonderful message for junior high school students. We're a little nervous about it all. I just wanted to add on that.
Sure, go ahead. Oh, I just had a, a couple of questions regarding your, the items that you identified as barriers. Because you listed, for example, a lack of funding that compromises certain things. And one of them was staffing, and I was wondering if there are particular areas in which you think that staffing is an issue?
No, I, I, I think that's a pervasive concern, where that we should always be concerned. And when, we took that in the context of what could we, well, we're addressing that right now as, as, as a district, you know? If we had more money, would that help out? What's the answer to that? Absolutely, yes. So, you know, that's, I think, funding in terms of getting extra, to staff, and maybe in, at some point in history, when we're rich enough as a, as a system and as a district, we can lower those staffing ratios and, but quite frankly, we're, we're not there right now, and I don't know if we're going to be there for some time, so. Money would be nice.
Okay, well, and so maybe your answer will be essentially the same to the other question. The other, because another one of the barriers, or one of the areas of concern due to lack of funding is textbook and supplementary materials. And so I was wondering if you feel that you don't have adequate textbooks or...
Oh, we have, we have more than adequate textbooks and, and... and through the entitlements that we receive, that we are allowed to use the money for those types of materials. We absolutely do that. We have a fantastic PTSA that has supported us with copies of textbooks so the students can take them home. But I, I think that anytime we can get additional funding to get more materials and expand upon the type of materials that we're provide, able to provide to students, that would be better.
So this is sort of a, if money were no object in, in the ideal world?
Absolutely.
We would like to have more than what we've got. Okay.
But, but again, I could see how one could take that, that we don't have that. But no, it's, it's working out really well.
Okay, okay. And then I think I had one other question regarding the English language achievement. And that was on page fifteen of thirty-three. You have improved English language achievement. And in looking at your data that you included here, as I look at it, it looks like there has been improvement. Maybe not as much as we would like, but in some areas, it seems a little bit, there's been more dramatic improvement than, than in other areas. Or I guess I should say some grades seem, we have more dramatic improvement than other grades. And I'm wondering if you want to comment on that? Or is it, do you think it's due to the interventions that you have at certain grades versus others? And let me back up because I remembered what the other part of the question was too. You also mentioned, I think you're, one of the barriers were, was, or the limitation was a two-year school program. And I, I wondered if by that you meant as opposed, now that it's seventh and eighth, as opposed to when it used to be seventh through ninth? Was that what you were referring to?
That does, Ms. Kurgar, is kind of a dream section. We put it in that context and wouldn't be neat if we had the extra grade. Wouldn't be neat if there's a seventh period. Wouldn't be neat if there's more money and wouldn't there be neat, this and that? But relative to the question about the growth of the English learners, it's really, I want to take us back to the concept of team because it starts at home with the family. And I want to commend the families, the elementary schools and the community. And when they're coming to school, we're adding to that. I think the, the more strategic program of the PLC. I think the focus, as Mr. Beckio referenced, the data analysis teams. I think the work that we're doing with LEAP, which is incredible work, all of these are starting to pay the types of dividends that we, that should be occurring. And I could say jokingly, it's Mr. Ortiz's excellent leadership at La Colina. But no, that's not the case. It's, it's a combination of things. And, and I've, I've always told parents when they said, David, what do you think of our kids? We take each kid, we take their wealth out personally. And that's what the PLC is, is all about, is noticing each kid, looking at that data, developing the positive safe culture, having relationships. So, I mean, we like that. It's, it's a combination of things.
Okay. Ms. Rodriguez, you had another question and then I'll come back to Dr. Malikov.
Just a quick formatting question on this too. I've been kind of going back and forth between the four plans, looking at the goals that you selected. And they're not all the same. I am not familiar. I haven't actually gone online to look at how the thing is set up. So, for example, you have a goal in here and they're not, every school has different goals, which I understand. But the, one of them is special education. Is that, did you write that or is that, is there a goal, special education that, and I guess I was looking for some elaboration on that in the title, but?
There's, there's, that's always a goal, but the fact that when we looked at that data and the data that you needed to see, oh, actually, Dr. Sarvis just gave you a copy. We, when you look at that data, we looked at that and that is a goal. And when we have the money and the effort, we've got to put it towards that.
Improving student achievement for students with disabilities?
Specifically in ELA and mathematics.
Okay. So, but I guess that was sort of my question. You guys pick the language that you use on your goal statements. There's not?
Yes. Your point, if your point is special education or students with disabilities, we picked that up after we submitted the plan. So it is students with disabilities is the subgroup.
And the goal being to improve services to an academic achievement too? Okay.
And it's, it's one of the, the subgroups like English learners, socioeconomically disadvantaged. And until we reach the point of proficiency with that subgroup, it'll be there every year.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Dr. Malikov?
My same question about AVID. Could you describe your program and barriers to it?
Certainly. We have a section, one section of AVID. It's the eighth grade level. We have a spectacular. This didn't happen until Mr. Beckio touched the mic. No, I'm, I'm good. Whoa.
Thank you. We have a section of AVID. It's primarily for eighth grade students. Mr. Marquez teaches the class. We have an assistant principal, Mr. Lito Garcia, who is the administrator in charge. And the students in the program, it's, demographically, it's a mixed group of students. But they have, they meet the criteria. Mr. Zettel, I'm looking over at him right now. And it's generally underrepresented students, but students who really don't have a family history of going on to college. And these students are demonstrating success academically. One of the main ways they show that is through their STAR testing. And they're on the cusp of doing some really great things. And that's what the program is all about, is to take these kids who are a certain level, providing the support and letting them, excuse me, take off. They have a curriculum that they follow. They also bring in a variety of community leaders, men and women from all different backgrounds. They go on college field trips. They teach skills. And one of the things that I did not provide in my report relative to AVID is that, and it's something that we're really pushing hard, is the skill of note-taking. And they have some reading and writing strategies, but in particularly the, the skill of note-taking. Mr. Zettel went on, came to one of his assistant superintendent visits and we went to the classes. And kind of a joke, but it's almost like synchronized swimming. And this just wasn't AVID. These were other classes and they're all taking the Cornell notes. So the kids in AVID, they are learning specific skills. And when you go to your visits, like Oxnard High School, and you see the success that they're having in school and also inclusion into the school environment and contacts to grow into the college or whatever they want to do post-high school, it's happening. It's a great program. We are starting our seventh grade section in the fall. We had AVID in yesteryear. We, we made a transition to REACH, which was a district-based program. We returned to the AVID program. It's never left La Colina. We've always had it for I don't know how many years. But, and so in our discussions, I was a little confused in some of our meetings because people talk about AVID. What do you mean you're bringing AVID back? It never went anywhere at La Colina. And it's, it's a very active class.
In seventh grade, will it be part of the wheel or is it?
No, the way we worked at, Dr. Malikov, we, we, we will go, we will put it into the day in the afternoon and then we'll do the elective or physical education zero or seventh period. So these youngsters will have an extended day. And they are very excited about it and their parents are very excited about it. And then the other thing I want to just reiterate, then there's a connection to the high school level. And relative to Ms. Rodriguez's question about the six-year plan, so there is another example of the six-year plan as they matriculate through the years.
Are there tutors as well for that?
Yes. All, all the schools have the same type, like, you know, the Cal Soap and the Merricore and, you know.
No, I mean, as part of AVID is their tutors.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah. It's a great program.
I was just going to say, but the really cool thing is that this year, there, these Cal Soap tutors are going to be trained in using AVID strategies. So to have some consistency with whatever tutors, but if they're actually going to be trained.
I have one other question. It's about enrollment. You said you have all these, you have transfers. Some years, you've limited your enrollment. Did you have to do that this year or anything or were you able to?
No, our, and I have, look at, our superintendents are looking over at me. That's, that's capacity-based and we have not reached our capacity. And relative to some of the other challenges we have in our school world, we place no limitations. If there's a student transferring from a program improvement school, we make that space available. We, we make it happen. And, and so otherwise, we have talked about limitations because you can't just have an open revolving door all school, school year long. So, no, we've, we've taken pretty much everybody.
I'm just going to follow up real quick on a question with that. When you mentioned, I think you said something like two-hundred-and-fifty transfers?
I don't have the specific numbers.
But that includes transfers for all reasons, right? That's not just transfers from, from PI schools?
Correct.
I just want to clarify that.
Others too. I don't know where we're getting them all from, but we need more actually. And then.
Can I ask you just a quick question on that? Are those students paid for, are the tutors paid for through their programs at UCSB? Or do we, the schools or the district pay for them?
A little bit of both. For the, for the most part, they're paid through, well, the Cal Soap tutors are paid through Cal Soap. And we are stipending them because of the extra additional hours they're spending in the training. So we're kicking in some also. And the same goes with Dr. Duran's students. He's, he supplies them with a stipend and we're also giving them some additional for the help that they're giving us. So it's mutually beneficial. They're getting their hours and we're getting some great help. They're also getting AVID certification, which is a very portable certification. They could take it to any district in the world. And I say world because AVID is international now. So we're moving right along with that. We don't have every class staffed to the degree that we'd like it. We'd like three to four tutors for the twice-weekly tutorials in AVID. I'd also like to see our AVID classes expand by, by two at the junior highs this next year. It will start to put pressure on the other electives. You will have people coming to the board with that. I just want to warn you about that right now because this is what we've heard happened. It happens everywhere. Elective teachers get very nervous about an elective that is so dynamic and popular that we begin expanding it. And I, you know, I, I just know that at every school, we will be expanding it and there will be concerns. We think we can alleviate those concerns a number of ways. So we'll stay tuned for that one.
Okay. And now again, I think, Chris, do you need to change the tape or have you already done it? Okay, you're ahead of us. Okay. So that brings us then to our next presentation, which will be, I think, La Cumbre, yes, La Cumbre Junior High.
I'd like to, I'd like to again now introduce our third principal. This is Ms. Joanne Keynes. Just an esteemed principal. She's been with the district for, for quite a while in the elementary area and now has the most challenging job of her life. And that is the principal now of a school that needs a turnaround. And we need to get them out of program improvement. And she's got the answers and here she goes.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. Yes, we do have the answers. Not enough time. But it is a pleasure to be here and since everybody's talking about enrollment first, La Cumbre that I started at on February first of two thousand and five, taking over a school that was in declining enrollment and significant dysfunction, I'm pleased to report that La Cumbre grew by eighty students this school year. The reason for that is because of our outreach to our feeder schools and of course, a complete reorganization of the school, the staff and the programs, as well as the structure of the instructional day. So with all of that, I want to just briefly touch on the three areas of focus that will come as no surprise. The first one, of course, is school-wide student achievement in reading, language arts for everybody. That's all segments, as well as math. And our major focus for this coming year, the achievement of English learners. La Cumbre Junior High has the highest percentage of English learners in the secondary district. It has the highest percentage of socioeconomically disadvantaged students in the secondary district. And it has the highest percentage of Latinos in the secondary district. Our third area of focus is, is school and community, culture and climate. So I'd like to just highlight some areas I presented to you several times about the reorganization of La Cumbre and I'm not going to repeat myself. I'd just like to touch on some of the newer reforms that have come in since my last presentation. And one of those is the, we started last year with the seventh grade block classes, having students in seventh grade with the same teacher for English Language Arts and Social Studies. Two, one period of each. If students needed an additional period of reading, they were given a third period with that same teacher, virtually half of their day. So replicating the middle school model as a transition model and allowing students to remain for a significant time with the same teacher who is trained in the teaching of reading. They all are double-credentialed or multiple-subject teachers, so they are reading specialists. So providing that extra reading support. We did some significant staff changing in our English department. As a matter of fact, almost eighty percent of our English department, this is their first year at La Cumbre. Some of that was by choice and some was not by choice, but, but clearly to strengthen the English Language Arts Department. We also added an additional half an hour to algebra instruction. So students actually start at eight o'clock, whereas school begins at eight-thirty. Or sorry, they start at ten to eight, school begins at eight-twenty. So additional time in math. Dr. Sarvis was talking earlier about that three FTE for electives. And La Cumbre has taken that three FTE and taken the master schedule and done some amazingly creative scheduling such that over half of our students are at school for seventh period, which is a significant number. Moving the electives around and putting them outside of the day has given us a great amount of flexibility. So we certainly appreciate that additional FTE, Dr. Sarvis. We also are offering homework and tutoring before school, lunch and after school. And much of it is required based on our monitoring. However, right now, we're on a run of students wanting after-school academic support. And my biggest problem right now is finding staffing to open those sections. It's, it's pretty amazing. Students are, are taking responsibility for their, for their education. It's just great. You have the elementary single-plan presentation. You have the elementary single-plan presentations, and you heard how elementary schools are struggling with English learners, socio-economically disadvantaged students. So it, our figures should be no surprise to you, because we are the only school that feeds from only Santa Barbara elementary schools. So as the elementary goes, so goes La Cumbre. And so with the huge reforms coming in elementary, we're sort of tagging on with that, supporting that, and using some of those same reforms. So we're very anxious to feel the growth up in the seventh-grade level out of our feeder elementary schools. One of the things that we do do, and we refined this year, was taking the first week of school and providing students with skills that we know they need to be successful. And silly as it sounds, you know, the how to organize your notebook, how to use the agenda, how to plan out how and when you're going to study, and how to have the right attitude in junior high to have success. And, you know, many of our students come in with not having experienced success at the elementary level, and feeling that, oh, well, here I go, two more years of no success. And so we are serious about, no child falls through the cracks. We're a small school, and I'm gonna talk about our monitoring, which is pretty amazing. You can't hide. We find you, and we are, I tell students the first two days of school, you may not fail. We will not permit you to fail. So you can do it the easy way or the hard way, but you will accept our instruction, our support, because you will do well academically. So some learn quickly, some not so quickly, but it's really catching on. As far as our data goes, La Cumbre is in PI year four, and we're working hard to reverse that trend. But La Cumbre met its API target and grew more than the state expectation. For AYP, there are 21 annual measurable objectives, AMOs. La Cumbre met 18 of those. We did not meet the objectives for socio-economically disadvantaged English learners or special education. But I am proud to report to you that for Latinos, which is our majority population, for both API and AYP, La Cumbre Junior High met state and federal expectations. So I'm proud to report that to you. When it comes to data analysis and our SMART goals, in overall student achievement, I have to tell you a little story about, you've heard me talk about our homework program, our homework accountability program, which started last year. This is a program where every Friday, teachers turn in a report indicating the names of students who did not complete every classwork and homework assignment. Over the weekend, that information is database. I database it, and it's in teachers' boxes first thing Monday morning. So it's shared with students Monday morning. And Monday, when it comes time to go to lunch, students who have, who completed the homework the week before, go to lunch five minutes early. That's a big deal. It also allows teachers that extra five minutes to develop strategies, find out what's going on with students, so that they can also help. Well, we took it to a new level this year in a couple of ways. And we wanted to note students who either have been on the list more than two weeks, or who are struggling in more than one subject area. And we call those students our three-star students. And it's really a flag for everybody. It's a flag for our counselors, for our teachers, for our students, to really look at this child more carefully and provide the extra support. So, you know, junior high students, being what they are, they have to have some kind of incentive to really get on the train. And, you know, homework, we know that in junior high, you do your homework, you experience academic success. It's a direct correlation. So we needed to find an incentive that would encourage students to make sure all that work was in. So as a staff, we developed a plan to take our minimum days, and in the morning, where the classes are 30 minutes long, teachers put that 30 minutes of instruction elsewhere in the month. And so on the morning of the minimum day, if you were not on the list, you go to a movie in the theater. And if you are on the list, you go to a homework center, where there are subs, because there's staff development going on. If you have three stars, you have the privilege of staying all day to help get caught up. So huge rewards, serious consequences, but clearly a definite support. And we had our minimum day on Wednesday, and I've never seen so many students running around to clear classes and make sure all of their work was in. And it's just amazing how students are, here we are, nine weeks into this, 10 weeks into the school year, and students, this is a priority for them now, getting their work done and in. So every month, we're going to up the bar just a little bit, because we let students clear up to the day before. So next month, they'll have to be sure they clear the week before. So little by little, we changed the habit, and our homework list has been dramatically reduced. Again, it's a real priority for us, and teachers have added yet another component for them. And I must say that for teachers to be able to make that list every Friday means that they have to be up to date on their grading. It means that they are monitoring students every week. That's a great thing. Teachers have decided that next month, when we do our minimum day, the students that go to the homework centers during the movie, our core academic teachers are going to visit any student that's on the list for their class, and make sure that they have the work, see if there are any questions, make sure that the student, you know, is on the road to getting caught up for that class. And this came forward from teachers, who are also very serious about getting students caught up and experience success. So we're, that's another dimension to the program we started last year. Avid, of course, started this year. We have one full seventh grade and one full eighth grade, 50 students, which actually represents a little over 10% of our population. So we are actually looking to increase it. We did something a little different with Avid. Because I have two part-time counselors and one FTE in counseling, my counselors are actually teaching the Avid program. And it's been very, very successful, because it's given them that tie with the teachers, that constant monitoring. And of course, you know, the counselor's the one who's going to monitor their grade. But anyhow, so at two classes, we're looking to increase that for next year as well. English learner achievement, clearly our number-one focus. And again, we get, we get from elementary school. We are working hard and making sure that our classes are done by leveled, our classes are leveled. We, one of the big areas that we're working on, too, is how, the placement of students coming into junior high. No matter what measure you look at, English learners, the measure for English learners doesn't usually accurately reflect their performance capability. And we found this to be true in math last year. We made those corrections, and La Cumbre, La Cumbre math scores are amazing. So we're working now with that in the English Language Arts. And with the data provided by Dr. Hayden, teachers are meeting, they're very cognizant of who's in their class, what their level is. We're also, since I have teachers that were, that I sent for training with the Susana Dutro systematic ELD, they're also using that as their systematic ELD program, you know, as a continuation of the elementary program. So we're very focused on the English learner. With the categorical money, and of course, our, because we're small, our money is limited, we are paying a part-time teacher, a stipend, to be our EL monitor slash coordinator. She's going to be observing in classrooms to guide our teachers who have those three-period EL cores. She's, she herself is trained as an ESL teacher. She's also going to have them observe other teachers, have other teachers come in and observe. The whole, and this is a very important professional learning community at La Cumbre for our English learners. So she's going to be more hands-on with that. We do monitor English learners regularly, frequently, of course, for compliance. And now, at the end of the first quarter, we've just met to look at who can move, what students can, you know, will move up, down, because, of course, everything is very fluid. La Cumbre, of course, with the four learning communities, our newcomer group is going really well. And I might say that the part of our enrollment swing is due to the high interest in the core knowledge learning community. When we started last year, we started with 15 students, our seventh grade. We have two full seventh-grade sections and a waiting list. So parents are finding that that's a community that they're really interested in. A lot of the change at La Cumbre, you really have to look at the school and community, culture, and climate. And I think as a new, as a returning La Cumbre person, a new principal at La Cumbre, that was the first task, was to look at the culture and climate of the school, not only with students, but also with staff. The culture at La Cumbre today is a culture of success, where success and high achievement, rigorous academics is expected. Students, it's just the norm at La Cumbre now. And of course, with that come the positive rewards. And today is a Renaissance assembly at La Cumbre, which is rewarding all those students for the high academics. And when I say "high academics," last year, the plan rewarded students who got a 2.5 to a 3.0. That's been eliminated. There's nothing below a 3.0, a B average now. And the stack of certificates that I signed this week is like this thick. Huge, huge increase in student grades and student achievement. Frequent monitoring, and we've taken some of our categorical to provide extra counseling time, so that we can call students in, meet with the students. Parent contact, parent contact, parent contact. And we found that one of our greatest interventions, when it comes to student tardies, student truancies, student participation in class, is to have a parent come sit in the class with the student. That's been very successful, and I have to really commend our community, because our parents have taken off work to come and support the education of their students. So even though the students that came into La Cumbre this year academically are lower, the seventh graders are lower than last year's seventh graders, they're still, we're pushing them and supporting them to meet those same high expectations. We're also supporting our students socially, social, emotional, in areas. And we think this is also important, given the socioeconomic range of our students. And we've taken our Medi-Cal counselor, who normally counsels Medi-Cal students, we've supported that with some categorical, so that she also sees students who are not Medi-Cal qualified. Character counts, six pillars of good character. There is no substitute for good character. It just filters all the way through. Now, how do you measure good character, you know, being a SMART goal? It's real easy. Walk in the bathrooms at La Cumbre Junior High. There's no graffiti. There's no graffiti inside on the walls. So when you look at good character and school culture and climate, let's look at no graffiti. Every student has a backpack, and every student, very few students are going to class late. We've also done outreach to our neighborhood, and we've met with our neighborhood group. They, our Neighborhood Watch group actually has volunteered to come and help at La Cumbre events. They'll, you know, they'll collect tickets, they'll do anything. They really want to be involved with the La Cumbre students. And La Cumbre, with the Prop 49 funding, has applied for an after-school, the after-school grant, $135,000, 135 of Dr. Sarvis's signatures on that grant, and we hope to be hearing really soon. This will provide a five-day-a-week after-school program for 100 La Cumbre students. And one of the first projects we're going to take on is in the area of service learning. We're going to let the neighborhood group designate a house in our neighborhood, and every week, every week, they'll go to a different house, they'll clean the yard, they'll plant, they'll take responsibility for the neighborhood that the school is in. Neighborhood pride. Those kids walk past those houses every day, and we want to make sure that they've had a part in the upkeep of our community. Closer attendance monitoring. I've got an outstanding attendance monitor, Ruby Garcia, and, you know, we really stay on top of students, making sure that they are in school. We've gone to pick them up, have parents bring them in. We want students in school every day. And huge participation in our elective program. When I came to La Cumbre, there were eight students in the band. Now there are 60 students in the band. La Cumbre has a drum line of 21 students, and the drum line practices at lunchtime. Our theater arts program, 80 students are in our production this year of West Side Story. This is all done outside of the regular school time. So staff development, staff development, staff development. First was culture and climate. Now we're moving into staff development, specifically targeted at the instruction to our English learner population. So we have professional learning communities in math, strong math department, very collaborative. Now we're moving into the ELD. We have partnered with the Santa Barbara County Office of Education, Carol Johansson, and they're doing a series of workshops with us on EL instruction and SADI strategies, releasing departments for that collaborative time, like I say, on the minimum day. Our EL teachers will be released at least twice a month to really focus with the EL coordinator. And one of the things that we're doing as a staff is we're taking time to reflect and see what's working and why it's working, and then look at the areas that we still need to focus on. And we did that just on, just on Wednesday. You know, the list at La Cumbre is very long, and we're being very careful to take it step by step in sequence, making sure that each reform is fully implemented before we move on to the next one. We don't want to fragment. We want to really, really focus. I think several, three or four years ago, when the district hired Dr. Pol, Dr. Pol's report said that La Cumbre was, I think the word he used was "fatigued." The staff in the school was fatigued. Well, Dr. Pol in Ohio, I hope you get a tape of this, because La Cumbre is an eager and energetic learning environment right now. What's my role in this? I drive the bus, okay? I make sure that the vision is never lost. I'm the facilitator. I'm trying to drive that bus out of PI hood, as I call it, and the staff is working hard. Trust has returned, confidence has returned, cooperation. And people now know. And people now know that change can happen at La Cumbre, because it is happening. Teachers believe, students believe, parents believe, the community believes, and of course, the district administration, Mr. Zettel, Dr. Sarbas believe, and I thank all of you and the board for believing in La Cumbre. Our categorical money is very small, because we're a small school. It goes closest to students. I've, I've explained some of them, a lot of it to personnel. Again, it's, it's a very small amount of money, but it's for student support. So, a year and a half later, I'm here with a smile, and we have some successes, we have some challenges, which we accept. We're, we're not hiding, we know what they are, and with all of the support from the district, I can't thank Dr. Cynthia White again, who spent a lot of time at La Cumbre, we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keynes. That was a very thorough presentation. Do we have questions from the board? I imagine we do. Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you for your presentation. Couple of questions. You have a very thorough report. I think you win the prize for the most number of pages, so.
That's why I have no ink.
And just a couple of things that I either didn't, that I missed, or weren't in here. And you were talking about you have your four learning communities, and I wanted to just ask you to follow up just briefly on, I know this isn't exactly germane to the single plan, but there's been a lot of discussion in the community about core knowledge and how that's going to be incorporated into the school. And I'm just curious about the interest level of the students and the parents in that. How many kids are now in the seventh and eighth grade are doing that?
Well, if I could just, because not everybody might, may know what core knowledge is. Core knowledge is a philosophy that says that at every level, starting with kindergarten or actually preschool, in addition to whatever else you teach them, students need to know a, a certain body of knowledge, and there's a sequence to it. So at the seventh grade level, in addition to the seventh grade state standards, students in the core knowledge program have to learn an entire additional body of information, and they actually take an extra period of English slash social studies to get that information in. Students in, in seventh grade core knowledge also have to take a fine arts component, and they come at 7:30 in the morning, 180 days a year, to participate in this. So, for example, in seventh grade, in history, whereas for seventh grade standards, it's more ancient history, there are other components in core knowledge, like the roaring twenties, World War II. In literature, they read Dr. Jekyll and Mr. Hyde. So it's, it's, it provides some additional academic areas that need to be covered. It's very, very rigorous. The interest has been, well, like I say, we've, we've doubled. And core knowledge is not for everybody. You really have to be minimally a grade-level reader in order to keep up. They read a novel a week. So it's, it's very, very rigorous. They also take additional field trips that support, you know, the areas that they're studying in addition to the standards. So it's, you know, some families have preferred core knowledge. We have a, a regular GATE program, we have a core knowledge GATE program. So some parents have had, have had that choice.
How many would you say you have in core knowledge classes in seventh and eighth?
Seventh grade has 50, well, it's a little over, probably 53, 27, times two, 54, and another 27 in eighth grade.
So it's growing if it's gotten, since eighth grade is smaller, so you're just building up in the seventh grade?
Right. La Cumbre did 100, more than 120 tours last spring, in having the opportunity to show parents what the school was all about, touring, and of course, you know, we explain all of the, the choices, core knowledge being one.
Thank you. And I just wanted to highlight, which you already did, your math scores, and congratulate your teachers for their success, and your students, of course, for that ongoing. I know you've always had some of the highest math scores, and not sure what your magic formula is, but it's great to see that continue for your students.
It's great teaching. It is. I, I, I have to brag a little about my math department. All four of them were math majors in college. So not only are they educators, but they're math majors. Because of my master's, our focus last year was math, so as we did our master's schedule, all, my four math teachers have the same, have a common preparation period. So I'm, I'm not able to do that for English, because it's the English social studies, there are just too many. So we're looking at more at other kinds of ways, but it's also been a consistent group, a consistent team. And, and they were a professional learning community before the, the term was coined.
Thank you. I don't really have any other questions. Thank you.
What jumps off the page for me is this, the, on the GATE numbers, the number, percentage of Latino. Do you want to talk about that? On page 14B, it says, six, I can't read it. 66.7% Latino in the GATE program, extraordinarily high for our schools, and I was just wondering if you could talk about it.
Well, all children can be successful. We go down into our sixth grades. We, of course, we are a predominantly Latino school, but our Latino students, if they don't have the skills coming out of elementary, we support them. Again, it's sort of the avid before avid came to be. And even though we are a, a high Latino school, we have the high number of GATE students, Latinos in GATE as well.
You said that, there's something about that the seventh graders are going to be a, a lower level. Why do you think that is this year?
In looking at the, the, the scores of our incoming seventh graders, the, the medium score is lower. It's a lower group than the previous seventh grade across the board. And you know what? I think anybody working in elementary, you know, it's sort of like one of these kinds of things, you know, for some reason, something in the water. Some groups are, are, tend to be a higher group, some groups tend to just, who knows? There, there's no statistical reason for it.
Can I just follow up on that question really quickly? Because of your PI status, do you think that you might be losing some of the higher-achieving students to transfer? And that could be skewing why your incoming class is a lower achieving group? Or do you think, or do you see that that's not a, a factor?
Actually, it's just the opposite. Last year, when La Cumbre dipped to its lowest enrollment at 407, clearly, there are some higher-achieving students opted out. This year, we actually feed from six elementary schools, and we're seeing the return of students who belong to La Cumbre, who had previously gone to other junior high schools. So it's just exactly the opposite. And a lot of those GATE and high-end families came to visit last spring and visit our classes and, and made the wise decision to come to their home school.
Okay. I had one just clarifying question for me, because it's clear that I do not understand this. And that is, you touched on it, but I, and I thought maybe I was going to understand it better, but I didn't. And that is the use of the MedicaCal counselor for auxiliary services for students and parents. It's, I'm not clear on, I guess, on what the MedicaCal counselor counsels.
Okay. Right. Through a contract between the district and family service agency. It's a counselor, it's actually a, a person with a master's plus. These are people that are almost ready to go into private practice. They're, they're hired through FSA, but they're paid out of MedicaCal money that FSA collects. And obviously, they have to counsel full-scope MedicaCal students in order to get reimbursement.
My question was, is, is it academic counseling? Is it personal counseling? Is it health counseling? What kind of counseling is it?
Well, it starts out as social, emotional counseling. It could go anywhere.
Okay. Okay. That was just the question that I had about. And then, I think I had a, apologize that I may have lost my page. Oh, I did have another question, it's similar to the question I asked earlier, which is, what kind of interactions do you promote, or do you have any, between the ELAC and the site council? I noticed on your site council, it looked like maybe there's a bit more diversity, and as you said, your, your school is predominantly Latino, so it would stand to reason. But I was just wondering if you have any specific activities that bring the two, two groups together?
Yes, we do. As a matter of fact, in December, we're having a, the PTA, with the help of ELAC, is going to be sponsoring a tamale sale. So I, I think it would be safe to say that there are more people on ELAC who know how to make tamales than PTA. So they're coming together to do this as a joint activity. One of my, my site council members, Oscar Resendis, is a member of ELAC. So he goes between the two. And we're working on building our ELAC this year, building that confidence, and that's why you'll, you'll also see some expenditures out of categorical for parent services, that constant contact with parents, recruiting of parents, information to parents, so critical in, in bridge, in building that bridge.
Good. Well, make sure I know when that sale is going on. I, I had one other question, I remembered what my other question was. When, when you were talking about your six-year plan, you mentioned a lot of the outreach or the, the coordination that you do with San, San Marcos High School, but you also mentioned that your, your student body is split between, in terms of where they, where they matriculate to, between Santa Barbara High School and San Marcos. And I was wondering what kind of coordination you have with Santa Barbara High School?
Right. Santa Barbara High School last year had the English offerings that we felt were the, were appropriate placements for our students. And what we did was help San Marcos kind of align with Santa Barbara High, making sure that, that English nine was absolutely offered with support, without, you know, whatever needed to be done, especially to some of our really high-end English learners, who could certainly handle English nine with a period of support. So we did work with Santa Barbara High, and, and again, we actually took what they were offering and said to San Marcos, hey, how close can we come here? Because it really should be pretty standard across the high schools. So we work both ways. Again, both sets of counselors come to La Cumbre in the spring. It's always kind of, are you going to SB or SM kind of a spring? And, and, and kids know they get a great education at either one.
Okay. Then I have one last question, and I, and given the way NCLB works, and the fact that it becomes harder and harder and harder to achieve the, the goals, what is your sense of how La Cumbre can get out of PI status? Because at a certain point, it seems, the, the way that the legislation is drafted, it seems almost impossible for people to get out. And yet, the school is obviously making great gains, doing some very innovative and, and successful things. And I always worry that schools get sort of placed in this category, may, do wonderful things, and still find it almost impossible to get back out of that category.
Right. And, and hopefully, and I know Dr. Sarbas will want to comment after I do, but all of us have faith that at some point, somebody at the federal level will really look at this legislation and, and, or, that, and speak to those who, who really do know where the flaws are in the law. And, and yes, La Cumbre's in PI year four, and I've had conversations with Dr. Sarbas and Carol Johansson from the county. And the prevailing thought or information is that, along with the alternative governance kinds of compliance guidelines, as long as a school is making progress, this is the whole goal, that there will be no, you know, additional sanctions placed on that school. That is my understanding. And Dr. Sarbas, I don't know if you want to comment further on that?
Actually, that was a great answer, because, because I also expect a growth model to be put in place at the legislative level. This school is working particularly hard on English learner achievement. That's an area that, in fact, some schools have shown that they can pull themselves out of program improvement, but as the bar gets raised, not this year, but the following year, it becomes increasingly difficult, and more and more schools will be caught unless there is a more appropriate model put in place.
Currently, we're looking at not having specific sanctions or any more sanctions, like takeover, that kind of, or, you know, letting go of the staff and that kind of a thing, which could fall under year five, falling on the individual school. We don't believe it's going to fall on the individual school. What we're hearing is that some sanctions will be falling on the LEA, the district. And, and I think the state is leaning that way, looking at districts to solve problems with, within their own schools. And short of that, I think sanctions will fall to the district. So that's why we're, that's why we're working very, very hard here.
What do you mean by sanctions on the district?
We're not sure yet. Those, and speaking with Carol Johansson at the county level, who is, she's very close to the county superintendent, to CCSESA, and very close to listening in to what the legislators are thinking, and, and the people who work out California's workbook with NCLB. Sanctions such as, you know, it ranges, of course, all the way from advice from the state to the district, audits, curriculum audits, and takeover, you know, of the district level. But I, I don't foresee any of that. You know, we're, we're making progress, we hope the legislation will change, will be reflected in a growth model like we know and feel comfortable with in California. We see growth at all of our schools. That, that's simply the prudent course that this legislation needs to take.
Okay. I think we are ready to begin with Santa Barbara Junior High. So Mr. Zettel, if you would introduce for us, Mr. Beckio?
Yes, I'm, I'm really pleased to have John Beckio, who, for him, this is a second report on the single school plan, but this is the first time he'll be coming to you as a principal batting cleanup. He's batting in a number four position, he's promised me that it's going to be an inside-the-park homerun, and I'm, I'm ready for this. So John Beckio, Santa Barbara Junior High.
Thank you. Good morning. And I just want to say, as I sit here, listening to the other principals, I'm really proud of all, all the schools, and I think it really brings forward the point that we all, as principals of the, of the junior high schools, have to really continue to collaborate, and we, we all have good relationships and share best practices and, and so, but I'm proud of the other schools. Our enrollment is Our enrollment is at about eight hundred and, well, we started the year at eight-twenty. There are a lot of things going on at Santa Barbara Junior High. What I want to present to you today are just three focus areas. Those would be the SMART goals. And then, I want to hit just a couple of our major expenditures in those focus areas. I presented to you last year on things like our math labs. Those, there were some things that were presented to you as the board in June on our reorganization plan. And so, that's what I'm going to do, is just focus on a couple things that are new this year. Our school-wide focus areas are English learners and students with disabilities. And those, I know you're interested as a board in hearing about those, because those are the areas that we have missed our NCLB targets. And so, I'll speak a little bit about those. Also, a school-wide focus area is math and English. And it's, I know, Ms. Cordero, you had mentioned the increasing targets in NCLB, and that is coming to us. And they will, in each subsequent year, raise by probably ten or more percentage points. So, math and English, we need to stay focused on that across all subgroups. Our school profile highlights our program strengths. I think the number-one strength is our staff. We are in year three of PI. That means we've been dealing with NCLB targets and stuff for five years. And I do not hear a complaint from the staff about NCLB. I do not hear them making excuses that the legislation's bad. I hear and I see a staff that responds to the data, and we do the best we can to put programs in place that'll support our kids. So, I really want to commend the Santa Barbara Junior High staff. Work thus far in our PLCs, and you'll hear me say data teams. Two of our teams are fully involved in the data teams approach. They got training by the county ed office on that. And I think our work there is a strength so far. Late start schedule is a strength, because it allows us time within the contractual day for teachers to have professional learning community team meetings. Teacher retention in our English department is a strength. We have, I think, our newest teacher's probably been there six years. And that really makes a huge difference. Barriers or challenges, staff turnover in math, is one of the things we continue to struggle with. I presented to you last year that we had three or four new teachers. This year, again, we have three new teachers in math for various reasons. That is a struggle for us. It will continue to be as we provide training in new programs like Edisoft and Ares and professional learning communities and all that. As we lose, if we lose staff members, it's significant now, because they're, the ones we have are being trained in such great programs. So, the staff we have in place, I was just mentioning that I hope they could come back to us next year in math, so that we can continue. Six-period day presents barriers and challenges, and we've thus far been able to get around that. And part of the reason is the 3.0 FTEs, and I thank the board for that, especially at a school like ours, that those 3.0 FTEs are very, very important to us. Finding even more time for professional learning communities and data teams is another barrier. We meet late start, but we do it two days a month, two Wednesdays a month for professional learning communities. The other two late starts a month are reserved for other things, SSTs and staff in-service, those kind of things. If I can go to the SMART goals. Our English, Language Arts, and Math proficiency goal, aside from class-size reduction in math, the math-support classes, the math-mentor teacher that we had for the first quarter to bring on our three new hires, bring them along. There's about four new actions this year I want to mention to you. We have our summer in math and English academy that we started last summer. I'm going to be improving upon that and developing it even further in terms of how we identify kids. Our zero-seventh-period mandatory tutorials, just last two weeks ago, we identified all our Ds and Fs, and they are all now in a zero-period or a seventh-period, receiving extra instruction and support. And we will allow them out at semester if their grades are C. They can opt in and stay in if their grades are C or better, and they will continue with that support class if they continue to show that they need extra help. And then, our English and math PLC, and those two are involved in the data teams approach, which is our own assessments, and they're linked to standards, and they are analyzing the data and putting it in a spreadsheet, and then being able to identify power standards, and they'll do that frequently throughout the year. So, that's happening. I also added this year an SST support class, zero-period, which is kids that last year came out of the SST process. We enrolled them immediately this year in a zero-period class where they have a mentor teacher, and that teacher is helping them to... These are multiple Ds and Fs students. And there's kids sitting in that class getting help. And the first quarter grades came out and they were improved. So, we'll continue to put multiple Fs in that class. And if there are Ds or Fs in math or English, we'll put them in the tutorials. Proficiency in limited English proficient students. And the one thing I want to mention is, we have opened a family and academic outreach center at our school site. It's its own classroom. It is manned by Ruben Gill, a fully-credentialed teacher, and also receiving his PPS credential in, I think it's December. He is a, he lives on the East Side. He was a graduate of Franklin. He's a graduate of Santa Barbara Junior High. He's really connected with the East Side community. And again, it goes back to getting those families on the East Side involved, letting them know that school is a place they can come to. They can sit in classes with their kids. They should be involved in how we're spending money. And that was one of the biggest things we wanted to try to accomplish, was getting better parent involvement. So, that center is open. He is coordinating AVID. He's running a check-and-connect program, aside from the parent outreach. This is a caseload of students. We're working with Mike Furlong at UCSB and some doctoral students. And they're going to be meeting with students and going through a checklist and connecting with the student, and also getting the families involved in educational seminars. So, that's one program he'll be doing. We are working with Cesar Chavez Leadership Institute Club. Pete Relus is working with Ruben Gill out of that academic outreach center. And we have about forty kids meeting once a week that are college-bound kids, we hope. And they are, right now, talking about college and universities and placement and funding and what grades they need. And we're working with Pathways at the high school. They bring kids down every week. UCSB's provided lunches for those kids once a week. And so, this is going to hit right at that increasing students, our latino achievement, latino achievement and their placement in universities and UC systems. So, we're open to see forty kids, four years from now, exiting Santa Barbara High or San Marcos or whatever. And those forty kids are going into a university system. So, parent education seminars are happening once a month. And we're teaching parents about the educational system, about our school, making them feel more comfortable about coming to school. We have three bilingual administrators at our site. All three of the administrators are bilingual, and that is making a huge impact on families and how they feel about approaching the front-office staff. ELD PLC team leader is, Ruben Gill's working with the ELD team to kind of revamp our English learner program and our ELD program. The next goal proficiency of students with special needs. This, the main problem we saw, this is a big problem for us. Our scores are low in students with special needs. And one of the things is, we implemented a program specialist modeled after the high school model. We're piloting this at the junior high. It is to have an expert onsite in special education who can mentor special education teachers, do some coaching, collaborate with regular ed teachers, revamp our individual instruction classes. And I would like to institute an AVID model in all of those and get the teachers trained in that. And so, this person really has alleviated some of the workload of the regular special ed teachers, so they can do standards-based lesson planning and give our special ed students that are in special ed classrooms standards, grade-level standards. And I think that's a piece that has been missing. And I want to see those kids challenged and have grade-level standards in those classes. We have a special ed clerical support you see in the plan that we've hired to do IEP copying, calling parents to schedule IEPs. These are things that I do not want the teachers to be doing, because that is eating into their prep period. That is eating into their time after school to meet with students or collaborate amongst themselves. So, that's happened. Our professional development plan, I met with Carol Johansson, and she and I came up with a plan that fits our school's needs. They are trainings that are happening throughout the year and our staff meetings. My staff meetings are fifteen minutes long. So, I got to kind of get everything in I can for fifteen minutes, and then I turn it over to in-service. The very next Wednesday, late start, our teachers come back and we finish that presentation. So, that's once a month. We're doing PLC data teams training, SMART goals training, active engagement strategies training, ELD standards training. We are in talks about a comprehensive curriculum audit for that professional development plan. And I'm not sure if we're going to get there this year with that, but it's part of our talks. School leadership. I want to finish by saying that we all do a lot of management. We're doing budgets and site plans and all that. And the piece that really makes us leaders is the vision. And so, my role as a leader is to have a vision and stay focused on that vision and make sure that I can carry people with me towards that vision. The second part of that, then, is seeking out the tools that we need to keep moving towards that vision. And so, that is one of the roles that I see myself playing at that school, is making sure the folks that are moving kids towards that vision, moving our staff towards that vision, have the tools they need. And then, I think the other component is monitoring. And not only myself monitoring progress, but creating a culture where teachers are empowered to monitor what they're doing. We're paying staff out of categoricals. And the push this year, I've told those folks, is I want a system in place to monitor whether that's affecting student achievement. And so, I'm trying to create that culture there as well. And I believe that's it. I would take questions from you at this time. I guess, I don't know if you want me to address the, I talked about the 3.0 FTE. That was a question you had earlier. You may have follow-up questions on that. But our AVID plan, because it seems to be a question, I'll address that. But my time on the presentation has ended, so...
So, we're going into overtime?
Can you ask the question about AVID?
You don't understand. There's a lunch writing on this, Laura. You have to actually present the question so that it counts.
Can you just say, can you tell me about AVID? Summer Institute, we sat down as a team, and we came up with a three-year plan for our site. We actually started this year with an AVID elective class in seventh grade. The thought behind that was, we would lead those kids into eighth grade and then create a new section in seventh grade next year. Or create a new section in eighth grade, but then fill that old section with new seventh graders. That's happening this year. And then, our intention is to send more people. I have set aside some funds in the plan, you'll see, for not only sending the folks the district is going to pay for, but also some extra folks. And like I said, I want to implement an AVID approach in our individual instruction classes, so that's not a homework completion class where they go and do homework. And so, I want to send some special ed teachers to get that training this summer. And then, next year, we'll have two elective classes and some core teachers trained. We already have a few core teachers trained from last summer. And then, our third year is looking at implementing more of a school-wide approach to AVID.
What do you mean by elective? Do you mean it's the seventh period, instead of a seventh period, or is it...
Right now, our AVID elective class is six periods, so it's within the six-period day.
So, they're not taking your wheel or whatever it is that...
We don't have a wheel. We do not have a wheel.
What do you have instead?
As what?
As electives.
We have, we don't have a trimester wheel at all. So, all our electives are, most of them are year-long courses. I am doing everything in my power to avoid the wheel. I don't think it's good for our school, because we have, I want to have art students that can feed into advanced art, that can feed into the academies at the high school. I want to have a year-long theater arts elective class, so they can feed into advanced and then move on to high school. Same with band. And we are a junior high that offers first-year foreign language and second-year foreign language at our school. And so, a wheel would not allow us to do that.
What will you do with health?
Health is, I'm kind of getting creative with health. There's whatever the time requirement is that you all...
Yeah, we just passed a quarter.
You did?
One quarter.
Great. So, I, what I want to do with that is put our health elective as kind of a high school model, where students coming in know they have a requirement to pass health, to take a nine-week course of health. So, then, what we would do is have probably two sections per quarter, so kids can enroll in that at some point during the year. That will be zero or seventh period, so that it doesn't affect their electives. Now, I think that's going to serve our school community better than the wheel, so we don't have to give up those electives. I will be taking our summer in math/English academy that you see in the categoricals. I would like to put a health section in that academy, so one hundred and sixty kids or one hundred and fifty kids in the summer have that academy out of, or that health requirement out of the way. Those are, many of those kids are going to be our double-period kids in the school year. So, it works really well, because they won't have to have that health in the school year. So, that's kind of the plan. That's where I want to go with that. I want to avoid the wheel as much as possible. Any other questions?
Ms. Rodriguez? Thank you for the presentation. Couple of questions, and actually, some of these, all three of you could address. The first one is, you were talking about zero-period and kids coming in Ds and Fs. And I think all of you have talked about that to some degree. On the zero-period, I've just been curious, how many kids resist that or parents resist that? Has that been relatively easy to implement? Or is it an uphill battle to get parents to bring their kids in? I assume it's seven-thirty or...
Right. The way I set it up, I was just very adamant that this was a mandatory class. I put it out to parents in the beginning of the year that this is what we were going to do. Most parents, you know, they see a D or an F on their report card, and they don't want to wait till, they don't want to wait till summer school. They don't want to say, well, you're going to go to summer school. And that's what we've kind of always done, is wait till summer school. They really want their kid to have a consequence for getting a D. I tell the kids, it's not a consequence. It is, we care and we want to help you to not have Ds or Fs. But, you know, the kids that, in our community, that walk to school, that's a little bit more of an issue than the parents that drop their kids off. And it's, you know, every morning, I go up there and I grab the attendance rosters myself. I make some kind of comment to the teacher about, oh, well, I'll call these kids in today. And so, the rest of the kids, you know, hear me say that. And I do, I call them in. For a week and a half, I called the kids in every single day. And the other day, I got a report from our clerical support person that every kid showed up. So, it's, you just have to stay on it.
And at Santa Barbara Junior High, is that the only option? Or do you have an after-school alternative?
We have zero or seven.
So, you can choose which one?
However, the kids, it depends on the level of course, because we only offered, say, the algebra tutorial, seventh period, but we didn't, weren't able to offer two, so we don't have one zero-period. So, really, the kids have to go into what their subject level was, or wherever we offered that course.
And does, this is just a question of curiosity. Do the kids do okay at seven-thirty in the morning?
Yeah.
I know what my kids are like at seven-thirty in the morning. I think they'd have trouble being successful, so I was just wondering.
I'd say it's more of an issue with seventh period. I don't know if you experienced the same thing. But seventh period, they kind of want to bugger off to Jack-in-the-Box or wherever. Zero-period seems like they show up, I mean, they look sleepy when I walk in there, you know? But it's okay.
You don't have to have coffee at the door or anything?
No.
We have thought about it, though.
But how many teachers are drinking coffee at seven-thirty in the morning? Probably everyone.
I was just going to comment on that, that I think the key point of what John said was monitoring. And that first week and a half, when you're doing the tutorial, to really check that attendance roster and to call those students in, not at the end of the week, right away, contact parents so they know we're serious. If you don't do that, it starts going. We don't have a zero-period, though. For, our only zero-period right now is advanced band, not for tutorials. It's all seven.
You'll notice at our site, there's kids that, even when they don't have a zero-period, they're showing up at seven-thirty in the morning. I presume a lot of times, those parents that are dropping the kids off are on their way to work. And so, zero-period... and so zero period sometimes works better.
Actually, our model's virtually identical to Mr. Vecchio at Santa Barbara Junior High. We have the math in the morning and ELA in the afternoon, and we just wanted to provide an option, so.
Yeah, good. Well, I appreciate all of your creativity and, I mean, I've watched now over the last, I guess, five single-plan presentations, just all the different ways that you've been working in innovative and creative, new, coming up with new solutions and new ideas and working with each other. So I just wanted to express that. As a board member, I appreciate seeing that, and it's always a little different every year to see what's happening, so. Question also for all of you on Avid, for students with special needs or students with disabilities. Does that, well, first for you, Mr. Vecchio, does that, I see that you specifically called that out in your program for students that they have, there was two things I was interested in that you're doing in special ed, and one of them was Avid. Is that typical for Avid to also be available to students with disabilities?
Well, it would be hard in a sixth-period day, because those kids, most of the special education students have an individual instruction class, so that is essentially their elective. And so this is just an idea I had to avidize the individual instruction classes and give them that class. So I would say it's probably pretty common to not have special ed students in it, only 'cause their schedule's locked in to having that elective as individual instruction.
But the avidize concept of using some of those same, sounds great. I'm an advocate for seeing our kids, all of our kids, even those with disabilities, be able to take and succeed in college courses. And they need extra, even more help than kids in regular ed in terms of organizational skills and note-taking and things like that.
To some extent, they're doing some of that stuff already in the individual instruction classes.
Are they?
But I want the training that is Avid and them to bring all those things back, so.
Well, since Avid's focus is on kids not normally being college-bound, and I don't know, I mean, maybe you're right, maybe all the special ed, the individual instruction courses try to aim them towards college, and if that's true, that's great. I haven't actually been able to see that personally, since my daughter's still in elementary school, but.
I don't think that, that hasn't been the case at our school, where we're focused on these kids are college-bound, and that's why the II class exists. I would like to transform to that and have some of that infused in the II classes, so.
I was just gonna share that with the Avid program, there's several different strands, and the teachers this summer went to several different strands. And one specific strand is the tutorial, which is a natural to be tied in with your II classes. And I have some real strong special ed teachers and who had been Avid-trained already and were already using some of those strategies. But like anything, you can put it on the shelf. This is really bringing it back by having every single staff meeting or minimum day going over another strategy to use in the class. It's good teaching, just like gate strands. Good teaching.
Ms. Rodriguez, I would add that the reason I think it's really be a productive and worthwhile transition is that the Avid program teaches specific skills. And when you don't have that consistency, I mean, programs can go in all kinds of different directions, and that's why we're such advocates of the Avid program, because the students that go through that model learn specific skills. And again, they can take those skills for the rest of their life, and we all know, skills result in higher self-esteem, and it all kinda fits together. So that's why it'd be neat to make that addition. I like that idea.
And the last comment I wanted to make was just about your recognition program for students with disabilities. And not to say that you, the rest of the schools, aren't doing it, because they just didn't mention it, but I think that's a great idea, and I think it helps either recognizing them the way you would recognize any other students, including your special ed students in the school-wide awards, or singling them out and having a special program, I think is great.
I thought that was particularly cool, too, 'cause I finally got to go on the land shark last year when we did the Avid student recognition program, so I went with some students on there.
Well, thank you.
Can I just add to that?
Sure.
It'd be interesting to coordinate the Avid, this idea of special education, children with disabilities in Avid with a program in high school. And that's something for Mr. Settle to think about, how to pull that in, in high school as well.
So we have somewhere to go.
In fact, you'll hear some of that in the high school presentations.
I think you'll hear all of that in the high school presentation, because the pathway teachers, and those are the, you know, English, math, social science, science, and I really like the idea of special ed teachers being part of these different academic disciplines, because in high school, that's what they teach. They'll teach a special ed English nine or that kind of a thing. Being Avid-trained, and that's why it's key to us that we get more and more people to Avid, and that we have more and more people involved in our Avid workshops, which there were six this year, so that they can be trained in these, how to teach these specific skills to kids, and then support them in that, practice those skills.
Yes, I also wanna thank you for your presentation, 'cause I found it really thorough. But I wanted you, because I had mentioned this in speaking to the other schools, I wondered if you would talk a little bit about what you've done to try to bring the ELAC and the site council together, 'cause I had talked to you about that previously, and I thought it was a good idea.
Well, we decided that we would have our meetings on, basically, our ELAC and PTSA meetings are on the same night of the month. They are, the times are staggered, so that there can be, once one meeting's over, the parents are there and they can attend the other meeting. That's one of the things that we have done this year, and it's just, we've only had two meetings, actually, one, because this month was a science night. And so we kinda just had everyone do science night, and that was, you know, all families together, we had translation and that. So that's one of the things we tried to do this year, and we'll see how that works out. The downside to that is that parents, you know, parents are there for four hours at the school on a night, sitting through two meetings, and so, you know, I'm not sure how that'll work yet. Was that what you were referring to?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, I said site council, I meant PTSA. But I think any, whatever we can do to bring all the various, especially parent groups, together would be helpful. I had a concern on your data, and that is that, and granted, it's a small number, but the Latino enrollment in the GATE-level classes dipped a little bit. And I was, and it's, but it's been a sort of a steady decline, in that it went from twenty-five point eight to twenty-two point six to twenty point four. Do you, have you had any discussion about that? Or is there some focus on trying to rectify that?
We've had a lot of discussion about that, and there are efforts going on right now to change that. You will see that be different. And the reason I know that is I, one issue is placement. And the placement of students, at least at our school, needs to be dialed in quite a bit. And so I'm putting a process in place to make sure that we place kids according to what they're showing us. I mean, we use fifth-grade test scores to initially place kids in the master schedule. We then wait for the new test scores, which are five months old or four months old, and we wait for those then, and we make adjustments. But sometimes, you know, those adjustments don't get made. So I think one of the biggest things we can do is have placement be a little bit more accurate. And so we'll use the fifth-grade scores to place kids. We will then have a summer institute where we're doing our own assessments, and in that summer institute, I would like to see if we can move kids up. If they're college prep, then maybe they can go into honors. If they're honors kids, they can be in that academy and get some instruction and move into GATE. So then, we'll have that. Then we'll use the new test scores that come out to make the minor adjustments, and I mean, go through every single one and make sure they're right, so we don't miss anyone. Then we have instituted placement tests in the first week of school, where we will analyze that data and find out exactly where that kid's scoring on our placement tests, to make sure that, yes, they were placed in college prep, for example, but their tests are showing they're scoring right at the top range of honors. Then we have a decision to make about where those kids should be placed. We did that this year, English department did that this year, and we found some kids to move around. And sometimes it's, sometimes it's down, and they're not in the right placement, they're too high of a placement in English. I did, went through the new test scores. I asked counselors to do this, and they went through, and there were fifteen kids that were scoring off the charts, that were not in our GATE program. And they were from Franklin/Cleveland schools. And so I asked that those students be put into GATE classes, and then we, you know, can test them or whatever. So that is something that I did at the beginning of this year. So there's fourteen kids sitting in our GATE program that are, that would not have been there, so. I am very serious about that section of that focus goal that the board has.
One of the concerns that we were raising with the elementary schools is in terms of the students being identified for GATE when they go into the secondary schools. And I certainly don't wanna put you on the spot of, you know, being critical of your colleagues in elementary, but are you finding that you have students coming into the, and this really could be for all three of you, into the junior highs who seem like maybe they could have been identified as GATE and haven't been at that point? 'Cause I'm wondering if maybe we need to be looking at how we identify students for GATE.
I think we probably should look at that in the elementary. I don't know enough about how they do that to even be critical of them. What I, what I know is that I've been to, I met with every single principal of our feeder schools, including the ones in Montecito. I have been to the sixth-grade classrooms of those feeder schools, and the message I bring is that this is something that's very important to us, that we are having kids placed where they belong, and that, you know, whatever, I just kinda relay that message, and I don't know what they do, what the GATE testing process is, say, at Franklin or Cleveland or Roosevelt, though. But I'm going next month to a GATE parent meeting at Roosevelt to talk a little bit about that as well, so. I'm doing a little outreach to elementary schools, and, you know, hopefully that helps.
This is actually a concern that I've had for this past year, and it's coming up again this year, to the point that I asked, it's how kids from Leve Union School District are becoming GATE-qualified. Because that's the other way. There's too many kids getting into GATE that really aren't able to be there. And the Leve Unions, and so I had a meeting with Sandy Robertson and Dan, Assistant Superintendent from GUSD, at the same table at the same time last year. The concern is so, that the testing in Leve Union School District, it's easier for kids to get into it. It's not as rigorous as the Santa Barbara School District GATE classes. So, and it doesn't differentiate between, will they be successful in English Language Arts and math? Or is it all of it? If you're in, you're in. And for some kids, they're GATE-qualified for English Language Arts, but would be really placed incorrectly in mathematics. And so what we've found, and it's true to form, it's happening, is that, particularly in mathematics, is that the kids who are in GATE math classes, it's too hard. So I went and met with the, I went to the PTA meeting for several of our feeder schools, and we have seven, and met with the parents and just informed them ahead of time, "If it's too hard, go ahead, let them go in, but if it's too hard and they need to back up, we can always adjust their schedule." Just having head-first-quarter reports, it's frustrating for some of the kids. So I've asked Sandy Robertson to meet, and Dan Cooper to come in again to discuss that. Also, Toc Hope School District has that same situation as well. But it's political. How to go back? I don't know quite the answer to that, but as long as parents are aware. For us, we have more GATE classes than we planned on. But you don't wanna water GATE down either.
Right. Okay, Mr. Rodriguez, do you wanna comment on that? Are you fine?
No, I, well, I, yes, I'm fine. But we go through an extensive articulation process, pretty much similar to what Ms. Rogers and Mr. Vecchio explained. I start thinking about our inclusion piece and access, and I wanna be real careful with the transitions that we make, because I think it's, if you push the envelope and you bring in the support, all of a sudden, the students develop those skills, they develop the self-esteem, and all of a sudden, it becomes more of a norm. So we do like to, you know, like I always tell the kids and parents, "We're gonna try to get ten, fifteen percent more out of you than probably what you would like to give, so we're gonna go this way." Sometimes they really don't want to, and we say, "No, you're gonna do the, you're gonna do the whole ball-wax math and science and English and history. You're gonna be in these classes." So we go find them, so.
And, Mr. Vecchio, I just had one very specific question, and it's about a book that you mentioned in your report, The Framework for Understanding Poverty. And I was, I was just wondering if you could explain, 'cause you said you purchased that for each staff member. What is it that you find so useful about it?
We had a staff development committee last spring come together, and they identified some areas that maybe we wanted to explore with respect to staff development. One of them was this particular book, and there are trainings on that as well. But the idea behind it is that we operate our schools from middle-class norms, and oftentimes, the students we have are, have not operated in those norms outside of school. And so it's really about, you know, teaching those norms and making sure we're aware of what, who the kids are that we're getting, and that's essentially what the book is about. We purchased it for the entire staff out of categoricals, and they, they're using some of those things they read in there. They pulled out bits and pieces, some parts apply, some don't.
And have you found that it's been useful?
Yeah, we had two, we had two or three teachers that wanted to go to training on it, and so that, I think that probably also is in the plan as well. I hear, I just hear chatter about it. I hear teachers coming up and saying, "Oh, that section on the norms was good." And so I think it was a positive move. I would like to find really valuable reading material and distribute that frequently to staff members. It doesn't have to be a book, but you may or may not know this, but Dr. White and Mr. Gonzalez and John Beatty posted on the Intranet Bill Daggett's stuff on rigor relevance and the rigor relevance framework, and I pulled two chapters out of that and copied it for the entire staff and handed it out to them. So it's, what it does is it, I put it out there, they read it, they go to their team meetings, and that just ends up being topic of conversation, which is kind of nice.
Well, I think, I actually think that's a great idea. I'm really an advocate for giving teachers, well, and all staff, really, updated information, new ideas, and especially things that come out of research or study that's been done in a particular area, especially something like this. I think this is extremely useful. So I was just interested, 'cause it's caught my attention as a very interesting title, and I think that.
I have a copy of it, if you wanna read it.
I will take you up on that.
We just had a side conversation on that. I mean, this is the kinda thing that can be instructive for all of us.
Yes.
And I can well imagine that Mr. Vecchio could give us a fairly brief write-up on the elements that his staff finds compelling, the thoughts that have a particular effect on their instructional delivery.
Well, I recall that last June, when we went to the, I always forget the acronym. The workshop out at UCSB. No, the one out at UCSB that was.
Cellus?
Cellus, yes. And we were given a whole stack, the district was given a stack, well, not a giant stack, but a number of books that they felt were very useful, and I'm not sure what really happened to all of those. I know I still have one, because I found it extremely compelling. I know, I still have one, because I, I found it extremely compelling, but I'm just thinking that those are really important. A lot of those share really great ideas, and a new way of looking at things, they, they often tweak how we're seeing an issue, and I think they can be really compelling for us to share, and they also give us a common vocabulary for which, by which to discuss the issues.
I had thought of the idea of a, just a one-page memo, because I had just sat in on a, on a principal council meeting, and it's the kind of discourse that goes on in those meetings, and it doesn't get to go beyond that, and the board doesn't see any evidence of it necessarily, well, of course, in these fine presentations, you do, but all too often, we have conversations like that, that would be instructive for others as well.
I'd be happy to do that. I, it would be very easy to send out an email asking to respond to your, the single most important thing you got out of that book, and I could put that into, into a report.
Sure.
It's, it's, having gone through the, through the training, and read the books, and tried to learn as much as I could about it, I think you touched on exactly what it is. It's about communicating through the lens of, of a culture, and it's not just a culture of poverty that, that people like myself, I guess, who are raised real middle-class culture and background, but also the upper end. There's a whole culture of wealth that we also deal with in our schools, and that has a whole different language, and a whole different lens of how the world is. And understanding when you, as a school administrator, or you as a teacher, speak to parents, or speak to children, or go into the homes of people from a socioeconomic level different than yours, and what you are used to, and what you expect, you know, it's, it's so helpful to understand the needs, I guess, of, of kids on all sides. So I would applaud.
Thank you. Well, I think, I think that would be a great idea, thank you.
I also think that we're one of the few, I'm gonna guess that we're one of the few school districts in the state, anyway, that has such economic diversity still in our public schools.
Mm-hmm.
And this has been talked about a little bit in articles in the news press, but particularly Santa Barbara Junior High and Santa Barbara High School have the whole range from probably some of the wealthiest families in the, in the country, to some of the poorest, and so what you're dealing with, particularly at your school, you know, is, it's great to have all those different opportunities to look at that, and then I just think it's something that we can celebrate as a district, that we've retained that diversity in our schools, and kept a lot of the families there that might have otherwise left for other schools. And I think all the work that you're doing, all that all of you are doing in your achievement, you know, working towards improving achievement at all levels is, is why that's the case, why we continue to keep those families in our schools, so, thank you.
And I guess to sum this up, I want to echo what Ms. Rodriguez just said. I think that as we sit here, and certainly for the time that I've been on the board, as we look at the kinds of presentations that get made to us every year, and it is so encouraging and admirable to see the constant work that the schools are doing to make improvements. We often are in a position, especially at our board meetings, where we're focusing on the things that are problematic, but it's really important, I think, for us to always acknowledge the continuous work and the continuous efforts that the principals make at the schools, but also that really everybody at the schools, from the, from the classified staff to the teachers, that we really have a tremendous effort that is being made in our schools to make the improvements, and with, constantly with the goal of improving student achievement. I think that's extremely admirable, and we don't get to tell you enough that we appreciate what you're doing, so this, I think, is an appropriate time to say that, and also that we appreciate the work that you put into these reports, because they definitely give us a, a sense of, of all the details that we don't, we don't often get to see, so we appreciate that. And with that, I think we can conclude. Dr. Sarvis, did you want to say anything to, to wrap us up, or are we pretty much-
Only that we will continue Tuesday at four o'clock.
Good, yes. Tuesday, November 21st, at four o'clock, we will be continuing with the high schools.
Yes.
And will Washington be presenting at that time, or?
In fact, we'll ask Washington to, to present first, then we'll go into the-
Okay, so we will add Washington Elementary School to that, to that agenda, and we will, our next regularly-scheduled board meeting will be Tuesday, November 28th.
Yes, and both of these events are back at the-
Back at our, our regular boardroom.
And will we get the Washington-
Packet.
Packet at some point.
We're hoping.
Okay.
I was just on the phone to try and get that accomplished.
Okay.
Could I ask when the adoption of all of the plans will take place? Will we wait till the end of the high school?
Um, yes. We adopted the previous plans that we had heard at that, at our previous meeting, so all of the one, all of the elementary schools, with the exception of Washington, have been adopted.
Oh, I see.
Yeah. And then I, I, it was my assumption we would adopt the secondary plans at the end of our next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Should we, should we amend the, the two plans that do not include that data? Should we get that into them?
That would be nice.
We'll get that in.
But, yeah, I think, yeah, I think staff can give that to us, but that's, that's a nice reminder, thank you.
Well, especially for the distribution to the school-site folks. You know, we can get it, I mean, just to make sure everybody gets, that would be great. I just have a question, I don't know if Craig Price needs to answer this, about, since this is split into two hearings, second, the secondary is split like the elementary was, if a board member was not present for one of the, can they vote? I mean, I, I missed the last one, the second of the elementary one, so I didn't vote on those. Next time, we're gonna have perhaps all five board members, but two of them won't have been there for today. Does that make any difference?
Maybe we should just vote today.
We do have it, we do have it agendized as presentation and approval, so we could vote on these today, then?
That makes more sense.
If that makes more sense.
Yes, we really should.
Okay, okay. Then I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the adoption of the single plans for the four junior high schools in our secondary district.
Second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, three, zero. That, that was a, a good recommendation, thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Okay, so that concludes our meeting. We again thank you for your time, and we will meet again next Tuesday.